If you would join us, please, to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have some special recognitions tonight that we'd like to go ahead and take care of now. As a board, we're pleased to recognize an exceptional group of Parkway students who earned All-State Music Honors during the All-State Festival Concert at the Missouri Music Educators Association Conference in late January. I believe that was down at Tanter, wasn't it?
Yes.
So I'd like to invite Jeff Lackey, Coordinator of Fine Arts, to the podium for recognition of our students.
Good evening, this is President Chris Jacob, Vice President of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty P. Stoffel, members of the Board of Education. It is with great honor that I introduce 25 extremely talented and dedicated Parkway High School musicians who have achieved the distinction of having been selected to perform in the 2016 Missouri All-State Choir, Choir and Orchestra. Auditions for these performing positions were serious and competitive. Prior selection for both ensembles was necessary, and auditions to the next level had to be performed perfectly with technical.
Ahah, there we go. I was thinking I was a little quiet there. So I'm gonna go back a little bit. It is with great honor that I introduce 25 extremely talented and dedicated Parkway High School musicians who have achieved the distinction of having been selected to perform in the 2016 Missouri All-State Choir, Band and Orchestra. Auditions for these performances, our positions were serious and competitive. Prior selection for local ensembles was necessary, and auditions to the next level had to be performed perfectly with the technical skills and understanding that made them stand out from hundreds of other students from across the state competing for the same seats. They represented Parkway well in their prospective concerts, which were performed at the Missouri Music Educators Conference before an appreciative audience of educators, administrators and parents. These students have demonstrated the very highest level of musical competency and have shown a personal commitment to artistic excellence. I would like to thank their music teachers for motivating, nurturing and guiding these students into the skilled and accomplished musicians they are. Parents, we'd also like to take the time to thank you for your continued support along the way. I would like to take the time to introduce the All-State Music Students from schools and ask that they join their principal and music teachers that are present tonight at the podium to be recognized by the Parkway Board of Education and Dr. Marty. Each group, please remain standing for a photograph with your school, and as your name is called, please come forward. Beginning with Parkway Central High School, Principal Tim McCarthy. All-State Choir, Choir Director Doug Hoover. Playing flute for the All-State Choir, Jane Wong. For All-State Choir, Choir Director Ben Silverman. We had four All-State Choir members from Central. Anthony Blotter, bass alternate. For the second year in a row, Chris Gu, tenor. Singing tenor, Luis Ocampo. An alto alternate, Noah Remy. All-State Orchestra, Orchestra Director Joseph Bradley. We have, I think, we have eight for a second year in a row and being selected for two separate instruments. For taking the time just a second, this student last year was selected for two instruments, and this year has been honored by being selected on both instruments, both trombone and cello. Last year he got to do cello for the All-State Orchestra. This year, he got to live out his dream and played trombone for the All-State Orchestra. So on trombone, we have Joshua Adams. On cello, Amy Anz. Playing violin, Gajin Kumar. Playing viola, Shiranya Kumar. On violin, Leah Lu. On violin, Anusha Manjunith. On violin, April Moon. And on violin, Jing Hang Zing. And that is our Parkway All-State Musicians from Parkway Central High. Moving on to Parkway North High, Principal Dr. Jenny Markwart. Choir Director Brian Reeves. Second year in a row as All-State Alto, Kirby Cooper. For bass alternate, Leo Demond. Singing tenor, Sammy Elphambam. Tenor, Daniel Ham. Soprano, Sarah Ku. An alto alternate, Elizabeth Metolski. All-State Orchestra, Director Ken Rapini, Michael Buckner, viola. Moving on to South High, Principal Dr. Patrice H. All-State Choir Director Jonathan Owen. We had three All-State Choir Members, second year in a row, Abby Benson, soprano. Soprano alternate, Maya Cameron. And singing bass, Baxter McGee. And from Parkway West High School, Principal Dr. Jenny, I'm sorry, Jeremy Mitchell. Sorry, Jeremy. We had two students make from Parkway West as All-State Orchestra is under the direction of Ed Sanhandrick, who is not here today. They have musical rehearsal this evening for their musical this week. We have Connor Brunig on viola. And Jason Wan, second violin. Again, this is a really high accomplishment for Parkway students making this seat, and we just would like to take the time to congratulate our 2016 Parkway All-State Musicians one more time. Thank you.
Again, we recognize these students, but we also want to recognize you parents who have played a big part in them becoming the kind of musicians that they are. And we feel very fortunate in Parkway that I've said, and I'll say it again tonight, that the music is part of our DNA, or music and all of the arts are really part of our DNA. And these kids really make us proud, and so do many others. I've heard the orchestra here at Central play, actually it was the middle school. I thought it was a college orchestra. I mean, and they do a lot of this on their own time, so it's a real tribute to them, and they excel at it, and we're proud of them. I'd also like to recognize Troop 310, I think is here tonight. They're way in the back there. We are proud to have you here and hope that you enjoy the meeting as long as you're here. We appreciate you being here, thank you. I don't think there's any others, are there?
There's actually a group of North High students here from our professional teaching group, so I think they're sitting back there.
Hi, welcome.
For those of you that may not know, in Parkway, we have several experiential learning strands. There's the one for entrepreneurs that's over, if you've been to Chesterfield Mall and seen that little store there called Spark, well, that's where kids go to learn how to be entrepreneurs. But we also have for teachers and for coding and medical, and a few others coming on here in the near future. So, welcome again, and it's great to see you here. We've had a chance to observe you from time to time. They're gonna be great teachers. Hopefully, they'll all be here in Parkway. There are two additions to our agenda tonight. Item 13.06, approval of personnel items. Just want you to be aware of that. And citizen statements, do we have a sign up sheet? Yeah. Yeah, we're not gonna take a break tonight. We have a lot of people, but those of you who would like to go to other activities that you might have, please feel free to do that. We'll take about a 60-second break here if you want to, while I get the sign up sheet. Maybe they're still signing up. We're going to move to the part of the, where we listen to citizen statements. Yeah, let me just. I don't get to do that very often. We'll move to the part about citizen statements, and we have 51 people that have something they would like to say to the board tonight. May I remind you, number one, if you've given a statement before and it's the same one, maybe you can leave that, give us your, in writing. And we're just trying to keep this down so it doesn't become unbearable for people to listen and to give it the attention that it needs. And we will accept your written comments if you want to give it to us that way. And we're gonna limit it tonight probably to, well, we're gonna start out with 45 minutes, about 90 seconds each. We'd like to give you more time, but we've got a bunch of other stuff to do too. But, so, we will start tonight with Joy Maxwell. If you would say your name and your address, so we can just make sure that we've got it correct here, and we can provide you a response later. Yeah, right there, Nikki, thank you.
Hello, my name is Joy Maxwell. I'm an employee of Thrive St. Louis, an interested party in some of the discussion that will be happening today. Thank you for your time, and I'd just like to share a St. Charles County case study that just discusses that the Thrive St. Louis Best Choice Curriculum works. The Best Choice Program has been implemented in that county for more than eight consecutive years with many students receiving treatments over multiple school years. Our curriculum is evidence-based and supported by rigorous outcomes evaluation. It is framed by the social science principle known as the Theory of Planned Behavior, which posits the best way to impact an individual's behavior is to impact their intentions regarding that behavior. Data collected and evaluated by an independent evaluation team showed Best Choice has tremendous success in reaching the youth of St. Louis. Two things that were shown, a significant positive impact on adolescent knowledge, opinions, skills and behavioral intentions regarding sexual activity, and even a statistically significant positive impact on teens that were sexually active prior to treatment. Results from middle school and high school students seen in 2015 in neighboring St. Charles County speak for themselves. We reinforce the role of the parent. At post-survey, a majority of students said they would talk to their parents if they had a question about sex. This has been identified as a critical component to healthy, safe behaviors. We empower students.
Time, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. James DeLuca.
Hi, my name is James DeLuca. I live on Princeton Gate in Chesterfield. Recently, a website has been created in opposition to the health curriculum changes. If you haven't yet, I urge you to visit it. ProtectingParkwayStudents.org's mission statement is to equip Parkway students to enjoy the benefits of lifelong sexual integrity. If you Google the phrase "lifelong sexual integrity," the results will list websites like Exodus Global Alliance, whose tagline is "Freedom from Homosexuality Through the Power of Jesus Christ." On the fact page of the website, the first four questions are crafted to imply that Parkway is trying to introduce a comprehensive sex ed curriculum. This is obviously false. In question five, the link to medically accurate information is maintained by the American College of Pediatricians, a non-professional organization that supports homosexual change therapy. The questions at the bottom of the fact page read like reworded copies of an intelligent design website. The website seems intentionally dishonest, but please don't take my word for it. Go there, read what's been written, follow the links they provide, check their sources, try to match up what is present and what is implied with what is actually written in the curriculum. Then ask yourself if it is the product of an honest, rational, compassionate position. The one redeeming value of this website is that it lays bare its creator's purpose. It is a framework of weak, outdated moral arguments and bad science disguised as concern for students. It attempts to use fear and the fog of conspiracy theories to maintain ignorance. So in March, please choose knowledge and freedom over fear and ignorance and vote yes for the curriculum changes.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Jeff Martin.
Good evening, Jeff Martin, Timber Hill Lane. Just here tonight to express my concern about the proposed health curriculum. And while I'm concerned about the content of the curriculum, I'm also equally concerned about the channel of its delivery. Ultimately, my children will be informed and sensitive to the topics raised by the proposed curriculum, but I think the questions we need to ask are, who can best determine when my kids are ready to receive this information, and who is best qualified to convey the intimate details? I don't believe that the classroom is the appropriate forum, and I don't think the teachers are the appropriate messengers. Our teachers are good, hardworking, smart and dedicated people, but they truly don't know my kids. They can't, there's not enough time. The structure of the school year and classroom environment don't allow for it. There are roughly 180 instructional days in a school year. Assuming the average class is about an hour long, and the average size of the class is 20 kids, the dedicated interaction a teacher has with an individual child is reduced to nine hours per school year. How many of us would be comfortable with any other adult? Your child is known for only nine hours, discussing various sex acts and best birth control to use during each with your kid. The curriculum itself recognizes this environmental limitation for teachers. In high school, the curriculum targets the children themselves as potential educators. The high school less entitled Methods of Contraception states, knowing that most teens are not having sex and don't need birth control, learning about it will help these people to act as peer health educators for their friends who might make this decision. So again, for me, it comes down to the method of delivery. Who do I trust and want discussing this information with my kids?
Time. Thank you, Jeff, sorry. Salma Ahmed Awad. And if you could just let us know your address, too.
Address first?
Name and then address.
Salma Ahmed, 14603 Mills Spring Court, Chesterfield, Missouri 63017.
Thank you.
I'm a board-certified emergency physician, and I have lived in Parkway District for 33 years. I am here this evening because I am a grandparent concerned about my grandchildren and the next generation. I represent the parents of about 1,000 children from the Muslim community who attend Parkway Schools. We were shocked to hear about the changes to the sex education curriculum about two weeks ago. Our parents and community members have been busy researching and reviewing the lesson plans. This proposed curriculum contradicts what we teach our children and does not align with the values we hold dear. We see no mention of benefits of traditional marriage in this curriculum. Our children's innocence is being attacked at various fronts by an industry of sexualization. It hurts and offends us as parents and concerned community members to see this happen at their schools, too. We find it harmful to our children and those they make friends with at school that they be exposed to a variety of sex acts and orientations that they would not know otherwise, hence prone to experimentation at such young age.
I'm sorry, your time is up. I know it's going quick. I'm sorry. I am gonna ask you, too, if you would limit the clapping, just so we can move through this. Hope I got this right, Merval. A-H-D-E-L-J-A. So there's not a Merval, is that what it looks like to you? I'm sorry, I'm not. Adel Habas. Okay. Javon Baker.
Hi, my name is Javon Baker, 11780 Boorman Drive, St. Louis, Missouri 63146. I'm gonna read an excerpt, I'm continuing what my colleague had read already. I wanna read an excerpt from teen pregnancy rate declining in St. Charles. Many St. Charles County schools have implemented Best Choice, an abstinence-based sexual health curriculum administered by Thrive St. Louis. Program is used in more than 40 schools in St. Charles, Jefferson and St. Louis Counties in St. Louis. They've done a nice job of giving good information and educating children on risk behavior that they may not think about leaving themselves open to getting themselves in a situation they weren't prepared for, said Jackie Floyd, Curriculum Superintendent for the Fort Zumark School District. The district picked up the curriculum after seeing it modeled in the Wentzville School District. Best Choice also is used in St. Charles and Francis Howell School Districts. The Best Choice Program follows a curriculum based on abstinence as defined by the government, which includes promoting abstinence outside of marriage, and that sex outside of marriage can have harmful psychological and physical side effects. The program also encourages teens to think about how the decisions they make can interfere with their goals. The teen birth rates in St. Charles County have declined with this type of programming since 2000 in the past 14 years significantly, about 9 percent. So, it does work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reverend Doug Murky.
I'm Pastor Doug Murky, 249 Orchard Avenue. I'm a citizen of the Parkway School District and an Assistant Pastor at Twin Oaks Presbyterian Church on the edge of your district. I'm here to humbly present this body with a proclamation signed in the last two weeks by 24 area religious leaders from Muslim, Roman Catholic, Greek Orthodox, Mormon and Protestant faiths, which together serve thousands of people in this district. The proclamation reads as follows. "We, the underside Parkway area clergy and ministry leaders, affirm our desire to see every Parkway student enjoy the benefits of lifelong sexual integrity. We affirm that these wonderful benefits and the means by which we may enjoy them are given to us by God, our Creator. In honor to God and with the best interests of all Parkway students in mind, we oppose any changes to the Parkway School District sex education curriculum that contradict God's design. In particular, we oppose the inclusion of concepts from comprehensive sexuality education into that curriculum. Thus, we urge the Parkway School Board of Education to vote no on the proposed changes to the sex education curriculum on March 9th." I have a signed copy of the proclamation I want to give to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend. Sue Weaver.
I'm Sue Weaver, I live in Claymont subdivision. First and foremost, I-
Could you put the microphone to?
Partly it's there, too, so that those that might be watching that this is being broadcast, they can't hear it unless they hear the-
First and foremost, I would like you to know that it is imperative that you reject the proposed overreaching sex curriculum. A major concern with this new curriculum is that it takes away parents' rights to teach this sensitive information in our own homes and in the context which we choose. Parkway states that parents are the primary teachers, so then please, step away and let me be just exactly that for my child. I do have my own plan for one to talk to each of my own children. Let me be the one to decide how to speak of relationships and values. Schools should teach from a perspective of biology and anatomy. Rather, time and again, Parkway averts students and their questions away from parents and family. One example is within the proposed 10th grade lesson on contraceptives. Parkway gives 15 and 16-year-old students instructions and recommendations about how to obtain contraceptions. This specific lesson includes three questions to ask your doctor, which are all related to making sure that what is discussed and prescribed can be hidden from the student's parents. That's a 10th grade contraception lesson plan. Please, reject the proposed changes and let this be my choice.
Thank you. Dr. Mason Bias.
If it pleased the board, my wife and I are back-to-back on the list. I'll combine our statement and keep it under three minutes, if that's okay?
Thank you very much.
Mason and Suzanne Bias, Claymont subdivision in Baldwin. We all agree the school district has limited resources to educate our children. Given that Parkway just recently overhauled the sex ed curriculum in 2008, I'm concerned that this newly proposed curriculum is wasting those resources. Three questions come to mind. Why the need for change? Who's promoting this new curriculum? And are there financial considerations involved? With all due respect to my medical colleagues, I have concerns over the composition of the medical panel being used to promote this new curriculum. The fact that the majority of the panel members work closely with, and to some degree earn their living off of, these sexual orientation and gender identity issues leads to an inherently biased viewpoint. These experts might know what's best for the small number of children who suffer from these various disorders, but do they really know what's best for our children as a whole? In an era where the higher educational system is so concerned with diversity, I find it ironic, albeit not surprising, at the apparent lack of diversity on this panel, and I would urge everyone to take that into consideration when weighing their recommendations. In the end, the school board and the district need to act in the best interest of our children as a whole. Secondary education should focus on preparing children for successful placement into higher education or the workforce at large. To that end, sexual education should focus on the things most likely to derail our children from their chosen path. Specifically, this includes avoiding unwanted pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases. By emphasizing abstinence- by emphasizing abstinence, as is currently being taught in our schools. Anything more is of little additional value to the vast majority of our students, wastes limited resources, and is best left to parents to address as they see fit. I encourage the school board to put our children's interests first, to use our limited resources wisely, and vote no on this proposed curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Lindsay Zeiler, or Zeller?
My name is Lindsay Zeiler, 2231 Colestra Drive. I'm the assistant manager for the Best Choice program. I'm going to bring to you the Javant Study, Challenging the Miss. There's a gold standard in research, the randomized controlled trial. In all the years of debating sexual education, only one randomized controlled trial has pitted comprehensive sexual education against abstinence-only education in 2010, the Javant Study. The abstinence-only education treatment was the only program that made a significant difference in behavior. In fact, it was a clear winner. After a twenty-four-month follow-up, abstinence-only intervention participants had reduced sexual initiation. The probability of ever having sexual intercourse by the twenty-four-month follow-up was thirty-three point five percent in the abstinence-only intervention and forty-eight point five percent in the control group, much higher. Fewer abstinence-only intervention participants than control participants reported having coitus in the previous three months during the follow-up period. Why did Javant's program and Thrive St. Louis programs work? Focusing on decreasing risk factors and increasing protective factors for all youth at-risk behaviors such as setting goals, decision-making, respect, friendships and dating, healthy versus unhealthy relationships, refusal skills, setting boundaries, internet safety, media and peer influence, emotional consequences. Reinforcing positive youth development sets our children up for successful life. The bottom line is empowering our children to delay sexual activity.
That's your time. Thank you very much, Lindsay. Alisa Beach?
Hi, Alisa Beach, Claymont Woods. Thank you for your willingness to spend time evaluating Parkway's proposed sex ed curriculum. My husband and I are proud parents of children in Parkway. Yesterday, I received a copy of the medical panelist biographies for those who will be presenting tonight. After reading these biographies, it appears these presenters will present only one viewpoint regarding the controversial subject of LGBTQ issues. While I'm thankful there are individuals willing to passionately express their care and support for this community, it is well-known the complex array of viewpoints regarding these matters. Even the medical community is not in agreement. So why are medical physicians or healthcare professionals not on this panel tonight with opposing viewpoints? A panel of like-minded individuals without the inclusion of opposite viewpoints is biased and misleading. I and other parents are deeply concerned that the panel's discussion tonight will misinform the community by presenting an unbalanced view and make it appear that Parkway is validating certain lifestyles and beliefs. This could potentially further alienate individuals who are opposed to this curriculum and confusing those who are uncertain about it. I and many others feel LGBTQ lifestyle choices place youth at elevated risk for serious physical and mental health issues, but regardless of one's position on these health issues, it is imperative that Parkway provides a balanced approach and a clear and effective manner.
I'm sorry, that's your time, Alisa. I'm sorry. Thank you, too. Holly Roseman? And would you make sure that you let us know your address, so I'm sure that I've got it correct here?
Holly Roseman, 483 Hillbrook Drive, Baldwin, Missouri 63011. My name is Holly Roseman, a mother of three Parkway students and a seventeen-year resident of the district. I'm here tonight to address the proposed changes to the sex ed curriculum. While there is much in the curriculum to concern me, tonight I want to address one particular aspect that, quite frankly, is embarrassing to discuss in public, but here I am. This is what our students will be faced with if this curriculum passes. As I've reviewed lesson plans for the curriculum, I've learned that seventh graders, kids who are twelve and thirteen years old, will be taught that anal and oral sex are, quote, "pleasurable acts." How can this possibly be beneficial to any Parkway student, let alone seventh graders? Specifically, the lesson plan reads, quote, "The type of sexual behavior that can lead to pregnancy is vaginal intercourse between a man and woman. There are other types of intercourse, anal and oral sex, that people perform for pleasure but that do not have the ability to allow people to reproduce," unquote. This seems to almost encourage students to experiment with these acts without fear of pregnancy. Most of the seventh graders in the Parkway community would be learning these terms for the first time, and I know that neither I nor any other parent of my acquaintance would want this information put into the impressionable minds of their kids, many of whom are just entering puberty. We've entrusted our children to you. Please don't break that trust by voting for an age-inappropriate curriculum that takes away the innocence of our children, increases promiscuity, and does not reflect the moral values of most Parkway residents.
Hi. Thank you. Ron Roseman?
Thanks, board. My name's Rob Roseman. I also live at 483 Hillbrook Drive. I'd like you to vote no on the proposed curriculum. A main concern of mine is that Parkway, if Parkway adopts the curriculum, the rights of parents will be undermined and will create an adversarial relationship between parents and schools and between students and schools. As parents have to unteach some topics taught in school and seek to remove their children during certain lessons, the right to teach our own family and faith-based morals and values related to gender, sexuality, dating, becoming sexually active and engaging in romantic relationships will be undermined. Not only will the message from the district on these topics be out of parent control, but so will the timing. In the tenth grade, students will discuss decision-making between abstinence and entering into a romantic or sexual relationship. When did it become a school's responsibility to guide children in decisions about romance and sexual relationships? That's a parent responsibility, and I don't trust Parkway, with respect to their teachers, to uphold my values on these topics. Why not? Because of poor judgment in other areas. For instance, in the high school lesson on how to put on a condom, the advice is given, quote, "Non-lubricated condoms should be used for oral sex with a man. For oral sex with a woman, they make latex-square, flat condoms." That's not a worthy school topic. Is this the environment we want? I think, deep down, you all know that this is not in the best interest of our students. Please vote no, so that our students can maintain their integrity and Parkway can maintain its.
Thank you. Steve Crowdes, is that? Crowdes.
Steve Crowdes, 20 Lockhaven Lane in Baldwin. First of all, I'd like to say my vote would be against the curriculum change. And let me also state that we in our family have a unique exposure to the topic, as we have a lesbian in the family that, in fact, is getting married next month in Phoenix, and we're excited about going to their union. So I have an interesting mix in this whole topic, though I vote against it as a curriculum. Recently, at a passport night in the Parkway Elementary School District, or in the Parkway, in one of the Parkway Elementary Schools, people from Jordan, Syria, Israel, all sat together, sharing their cultures, people with very different worldviews, accepting one another, each other as neighbors and friends. Isn't that what we want to see and how Parkway School District look like? It sends me to hear members of the community state that the conservative families don't belong in public schools. It's a kind of thinking that promotes an environment of exclusion rather than a culture of inclusion that we so desperately claim to seek. It creates a situation whereby one group is marginalized and invalidated. I am confused by this because isn't this what we are arguing against? Isn't this the kind of environment that Parkway is seeking to eliminate? An environment of exclusion and separation, marginalization. Parents who are both, parents who are on both for and against the proposed curriculum care deeply about the LGBTQ students and want to see them thrive in supporting and loving environment. However, counter to the misconceptions, parents who are opposed to what is proposed curriculum teaches are not fearful and are not narrow-minded. They know that support doesn't always take the form-
Sorry, that was, it goes quickly. I'm sorry. Thank you for your comments. Peggy Welker?
Hi, my name is Peggy Welker. I'm at 13165 Amiat Drive. Thank you for listening to comments tonight while wrestling with the complex issue of moving from abstinence-based to a comprehensive sexuality curriculum. I am a parent dedicated to seeing my children and her friends be equipped to enjoy lifelong sexual integrity, but I am concerned that children like my daughter, who has autism, will not be given curriculum that meets their developmental needs. For her sixth-grade birthday party, we had all typical friends, and she had an American Girl Doll Party. In seventh grade, we had a dress-up party. As a parent, I nurture this playful innocence until I feel she's developmentally ready for more adult themes. How can the district tell parents that all seventh graders are developmentally ready for a group discussion that anal sex is pleasurable? How will this curriculum address my daughter and other children's needs for concrete concepts without getting her suspended or myself hotlined for inappropriate behavior that she learned in health class? This very scenario has actually happened through the Parkway School District. It is not an exaggeration. Will Parkway create a policy to address the content of replacement curriculum for those who opt out? Number two, the textbook content is not in alignment with state law when explaining the two methods of emergency contraceptives. It fails to mention that these are methods are post-fertilization and are, in effect, board efficient, which is illegal in a Parkway textbook. Number three, in reviewing the high school curriculum, there is only one reference to pornography, where it says, "Looking at pornography can be a bad idea."
Thank you, Peggy. Steve Wunsch?
Hi, my name's Steve Wunsch. I'm at 346 Elmcrest Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard here tonight. One of the foundational premises that we've heard throughout these meetings about the new curriculum is that everything will be taught in a value-neutral manner. Now, I definitely understand that as educators in a public system, a value-neutral model can appear like a pragmatic answer to a very difficult problem, but the question I think you have to ask is, can these discussions be value-neutral? To me, the answer is no, because where no overt references to values surrounding sexual behavior are made, indirect value messages will always be communicated. For example, a typical safe sex message might go something like, "Talk with your partner, use condoms, have regular checkups, look for symptoms." In the absence of a stated value, the unstated values within that information is that it is accepted and is expected for teens to be sexually active with multiple partners, and it sends a message to non-sexually active teens that they are different. And that message will clash head-on with the other big questions of teenage life of, "Am I different? Do I fit in? Am I acceptable?" So I believe that value-neutral sexuality education in practice is not neutral at all, and for that reason, I would encourage you to reject the proposed curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Butler?
Hi, I'm Mike Butler, 406 Andover Lane, Baldwin. I'm not a bigot. I don't think I'm ignorant or fearful. I think a sex ed program is important, and I'm fine with teaching students the facts about sexual health and sexual differences so they can be informed, but I think the proposed curriculum goes well beyond that by almost embracing sexual freedom for kids of all ages. As you all help to guide students through a crucial developmental and vulnerable, vulnerable stage in their lives, are you in favor of putting your stamp of approval on things like teaching seventh graders that anal and oral sex are pleasurable? Or teaching students that they have the right to hide their sexual activity and health from their parents by having Parkway health teachers give them three questions to ask their doctor specifically aimed at doing that? These are just two specifics in the proposed curriculum, and there are many more topics in there that look a lot more like teaching kids how to have sexual pleasure and safe sex and how to do it secretly versus teaching them about the value of not having sex. I've heard things like, "They can just opt out," which to me only transfers the feeling of shame. I've heard this justified by saying, "We've been teaching this already," which to me is irresponsible at best. Students are having sex, or kids are asking for all this information, which is an excuse begging the question, "Who's in charge of here anyway?" I'm asking that you read and understand the curriculum, and if you find, like I have, that it goes too far, then please vote no. We can and should expect more from and for our students to protect their sexual integrity, and we can come up with something better. Thanks.
Thank you. Barb Waite?
Good evening, I'm Barb Waite, Parkway resident, parent, and I live at 10 Summerhill Lane, Chesterfield 63017. Good evening. The truth is, every Parkway student needs compassion. Every Parkway student needs kindness. Every Parkway student needs truth. And the truth is, there is no such thing as safe sex among adolescents. The proposed curriculum teaches sophomores that if sex is consensual, it is okay. A lesson plan shown to the community in January instructs teachers to display the word consent to students and to ask them, "What does this word mean?" Then they are instructed to explain to the students that when it comes to sexual activity and sex, you have the right to decide when you do it, where you do it, and how you do it. For any sexual activity to happen, both people need to consent. One of the high school learning outcomes is that all students will use the decision-making model to defend the decision of being abstinent or entering into a sexual relationship. Sexual relationships are based on sexual behaviors. Sexual behaviors for adolescents are risky behaviors. Teaching Parkway students to defend their choice to engage in risky behaviors is unacceptable. Parkway goes to-
Your time is up. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Julie Blasini?
My address is Cypress Hill Drive in Chesterfield. Good evening, I am a parent of three children in Parkway, and I've been a member of the HPE Committee for eighteen months. I, advisory council for eighteen months. I have reviewed, reviewed the proposed lessons, curriculum, and videos. I want to state that I sincerely wish that all Parkway students enjoy, when I say sexual integrity, I refer to it as a holistic sexual, addressing sexuality in a holistic way. That's why I'm very concerned about this curriculum Parkway is considering. I have just three concerns, and I have the facts substantiating them here, which I will pass out to you. The first one, it fails to truthfully connect sexual behaviors with disease and other consequences. Number two, it burdens kids with responsibilities and decisions beyond developmental capacities. I have three children that have been in seventh and eighth grade. These are very emotional years. Anyone who has been in seventh and eighth grade can verify that these are emotional years. The developmental span during this time is so wide and varied. Each of my children have been at very different places, and they came from the same home with the same parents. So adding the pressures to deal with and some of the topics addressed in these lesson plans would be stressful to most and overwhelming to some. Number three, Parkway has stated in the meetings that they are moving towards incorporating more comprehensive sexuality standards, which dismiss traditional morality and oppose a new morality. The new morality aggressively promotes an ideology of sexual exploration from an early age.
Sorry, your time is up. I'm sorry. Thank you. Melissa Luanzi? Did I say that right? Halfway? Got Melissa right? Yeah, if you'll let me know your address, if you-
It's Lonnie. My last name is Lonnie, unless there is a Melissa Luanzi here that I think-
I think you're right.
Okay. And I live on Spring Meadows Drive in Manchester, and I've lived there for twenty years. My husband and I have four children, three of whom are currently in the Parkway District. I've been at the Sexual Health Curriculum Committee meetings, talked with many parents and students on this issue about the proposed sexual health curriculum. And to me, my understanding that the fundamental issue really presenting us is one of love and respect. Love and respect for all students. It's my understanding that Parkway is committed to loving and respecting students of all kinds. Fostering such a community takes a lot of wisdom and common sense. And in my mind, the proposed curriculum that's being presented to you guys to vote on is not one that's full of real wisdom and common sense that would really promote love and respect for all students. I propose that, in the current curriculum, a love and respect unit be added. A unit where maybe students can give their personal presentations- A unit where maybe students can give their personal presentations, describe their likes and dislikes, their preferences, their opinions, their hobbies, their background. Let their class know who they are in that way. A district-wide curriculum change seems extreme and inappropriate.
Your time is up, Melissa, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sharon Baca, I'm a Parkway resident. I live at 3 Chesterton Lane. I hold a master's degree in education, and I was an elementary school teacher for two years. For the last nine years, I have worked with middle schoolers here in this community that serve Parkway students. The majority of my work week is spent listening, counseling, and caring for middle schoolers, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen-year-olds. In fact, just this morning, I was with two girls at Six North Cafe. Do you know what their stories are mostly filled with? Anxiety, stress, fear, depression, loneliness, suicidal thoughts, all of them. And the root of what that struggle is, is their identity, their purpose, where they belong. My gravest concern with this proposed curriculum is that in your sincere effort to alleviate these anxieties by starting relevant dialogue will in fact create more anxiety, more depression, more loneliness. Because these students are vulnerable and they are impressionable, as somebody mentioned earlier, middle school, as students are transitioning from concrete to abstract learners, as they're going through puberty, emotional and mental changes, do not have the capacity to grapple with the terminology and the concepts that are proposed in this curriculum, such as anal and oral sex.
Sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Samantha DeMashelli, and I go to Parkway Northeast Middle School. And I am voting yes for the curriculum change in the health, because I am transgender, but like, I want my friends to like, know what it is instead of having to explain it over and over. And I think that it's even for the people who aren't, like, I don't know yet, but I think it would be nice to know that, like, I am not a disorder or anything, like, I'm a person too. So, I think it would be a great idea for people to know my side of the story and not just like, stuff they like, found out from either like, media or other things. But I thought it would always be like, a good idea for people to know the full story. And, yeah, I hope it like, is good.
Bill Dunn? We're all proud of Samantha.
Hi, Board. My name is Bill Dunn, 508 Briarwick Drive. I've got two girls in the Parkway School District. Sexual integrity for my two young daughters is extremely important to me, and I believe that I can make an impact on their lives in this area by educating and communicating with them. I also believe that sex education is and can be very effective as well. Most parents that I know value honesty in their relationships with their children. I see in the sophomore lesson plan on methods of contraception that kids are directed to ask their doctors about their confidentiality rules when making an appointment. Parkway suggests the student asks questions like these, "Can I get services at your office without my parents' permission? Can my parents have access to my records? And will my parents see the bill?" I believe our schools should always support the parent-child relationships above all and never encourage them to hide information from their parents, especially when it comes to something as important as sex. Please respect our role as parents and vote no on this curriculum. This curriculum does not fit with our local community morals, values, and standards for raising children. A biased activist agenda is out of place in our caring community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Scott Smout or Smoot?
I'm Scott Smout. I'm a father to two Parkway students currently, soon to be three. Address is 12856 Topping Acres. I'll be brief. I would urge you to reject the proposed changes to the sex ed curriculum. But more importantly, I'd urge you to ask a few questions about those proposed changes during your evaluation. The first one is, it's been brought up multiple times, is this age-appropriate? Is it universally age-appropriate? I would submit to you that I don't believe it is. The second question I would ask is, is it universally accepted by the medical community, some of the things that are brought up in this curriculum? I understand that we've got some professionals that are going to come out tonight, and they're giving up their time, and I appreciate that. But I would submit to you that I don't believe it is universally accepted. As a physician, I don't believe it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I am Lillian Humphrey. I live 311 Stablestone Drive, and I, as a student, approve of the new Parkway sex ed program that would be introduced next year if it is passed. It would be a plus for students to come to school and do what they are supposed to do, which is learn. Holding this back would mean more kids like me getting either false or no information, or false information from their parents, or even more misinformed kids. I myself had to learn most things on my own, online, through books, and through other people that were willing to educate me, which is all very sketchy because I didn't know what I was doing. And talking and just, ah, I don't want that for other kids. I don't want that for my little sister or my little brother. I want our schools to take action in educating our kids, and this is a step in the right direction. Abstinence does not work, and this is not a religious battle. This is a battle for educating our students properly. This is not about traditions, this is not about anything, but just giving our students the right to learn. And that is a huge thing for me, and I would really, really appreciate it if you considered voting yes for this. Many tears have been shed over it, and so much work for the students who really want this to be put into our schools. I, let them learn.
Thank you, Lillian. Appreciate that. CJ Raver? CJ Raver? Is that Raver, Raven?
Hi, my name is CJ. I am also a student at Parkway Central. And so, I've been going to Parkway my entire life, and I can honestly say that our sex ed, sorry, our sex ed, like, program isn't working, because at this point, all of the sex ed that I have personally had, and I know people who are older than me who have had pretty much the same amount, which isn't much, because it's abstinence-only. And the fact is that states and schools that have abstinence-only education typically have a higher, higher rate of teen pregnancies and STDs, which is actually a fact, rather than a lot of people's opinions. And even though it is my opinion that we should, this should pass, I know that, I don't even know where I'm going with this, but the thing is, that the generation that this is going to be going to could either be the generation that gets rid of STDs at this point, or we could end up with more and more teen pregnancies, which can help prevent people from getting a proper education, which is obviously not a good thing. But, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there someone, Cher? Asher, it's Asher. Okay, that's an A. All right.
Alrighty. My name is Asher McMea, I live at 1214 Rivley Drive in Manchester, Missouri. Alrighty. I'm turning eighteen in two days and some odd hours, and as an almost legal adult, I've been miseducated for all four years of my Parkway High School education, because I've been told that consent is up to me. As someone who was raped not a week ago, I believe that if I had been taught how to say no stronger, if I had been taught how to say no, how to be safe, how to fight back, that would not have happened. I firmly believe that it is distasteful to tell me how my education should be, and I think that it's just really gross that five hundred and twenty-plus people, according to a survey, I have it on paper, believe that these, this education would be better for us and that it should be more comprehensive, teach us all about LGBTQ education and stuff like that, because as a trans person, I just don't, I feel attacked and unsafe in my own school. And I just feel like it'd be better to think about the students instead of the parents in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher.
Hello. Three years, dozens of meetings, dozens of testimonies, and now we're here. We have five hundred and twenty signatures that say that we should have sex ed that is more inclusive in Parkway. And I know that there are many more people here that are wanting that as well. Passing sex ed that would be inclusive would help everyone in this room. Not only would it help everyone be sexually healthy, it would give support to LGBTQIAAP+ students feel safe and welcome in Parkway schools, where many students don't. Isn't that what Parkway strives for? Isn't that where most schools are supposed to be? Three basic principles, being healthy, being inclusive, and being educated. Passing this curriculum would help Parkway achieve all three of those to the greatest ability. We need this. Us students need this. We are the ones who are roaming the halls. We are the ones who are getting the sex ed. We can have parents come up here, and yes, they're concerned, but we're the students who are coming up and who are having these lessons, and we're the ones who are going to be affected, and we're the ones who are going to be in this next generation. I urge you to please, please pass this. It will help everyone, and it will create a better generation of Parkway students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andrew. We've got twenty-three more that want to say something. We're going to take a break from the citizen statements and go into our panel. We'll come back after that so that you can have those, say those statements if you want. Considering our agenda, let me just take care of a little housekeeping here. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for February 17th, 2016?
So moved?
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Resolutions, there are none. Eleven point zero work session. May I call on Dr. Lisa Meredith, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, for an update on the sexual health curriculum and introduction of the
Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Mogerman, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, and Mrs. Stover. I am pleased to take a few brief moments to provide an update on the work related to the Parkway Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health Curriculum Framework. Thank you for the continued support and thoughtful questions during this process. We appreciate the extra time prior to approval, as it has provided us an opportunity to seek additional input from professionals and families. This process allowed us the opportunity to bring clarity to standards, instructional practices, and resources. Can I get that moved to present? Thank you. We want to begin by thanking you for providing us with clear direction through a well-defined mission that guides all of the district work related to curriculum, assessment, and instruction. It is our strong commitment to ensure that the revised curriculum is mission-driven, while at the same time ensuring that it is developmentally appropriate and medically accurate. In addition to the mission, we have the Parkway Vision Statements to guide our work. While all curriculum content areas are responsible for the ten visioned statements, in the sexual health curriculum, we have a strong focus on three Parkway Vision Statements. They read, "We are successful when all students are literate and critical consumers of information and ideas." "We are successful when all students are acting out of a strong sense of personal, social, and civic responsibility." And "We are successful when all students are always seeking to understand the views, values, and cultures of others." So, the proposed revisions were the direct result of a program evaluation. As part of our practice in Parkway, each curriculum goes through a curriculum and program evaluation every few years. Here is a history of the review of our comprehensive health and physical education curriculum. It began in the fall of 2013, when we launched the program evaluation. In April of 2014, Mr. Ramspot shared with you the results of that program evaluation and the recommendations. One recommendation was to do a deeper review and revision of the Parkway Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health Framework. As a result, in the summer of 2014, the Health Advisory Committee was launched, and they began the work of study and design of the proposed curriculum framework. Part of that work included a survey in the fall of 2014. We came to you in the fall, and I'll talk more about that survey in a minute. We came to you in the fall of 2015, in October, and asked for approval of the physical education and health curriculum, which you granted approval of minus the Healthy Relations and Sexual Health Framework. At that time, we committed to you that we would continue our work to study and to move out of order and design some sample lessons so that we could gain greater clarity of what would be involved in the curriculum. So, some may ask, why now? I believe it is important for us to understand that there are unique health challenges that our youth face today, that society has introduced to us, not our schools. The revisions in the curriculum are about healthy youth and safe school communities. The intent of the Healthy Relationship and Sexual Health Curriculum is not to condone or promote certain behaviors, but to validate that they exist and understand how everyone can help in diminishing real threats to the health of our youth and communities. Our goal is to help students understand the world around them, as well as their fellow students, so that we can truly accomplish our vision statements and remain true to our commitment of valuing each child's uniqueness and supporting their health and well-being. During the process, it was critical for the team to understand the laws in the state of Missouri regarding health curriculum. The laws have been reviewed, and all proposed revisions are aligned with state statutes. In addition, the Health Advisory reviewed the Parkway Board of Education policy, which identifies our commitment to teaching our students about healthy relationships and sexual health risk reduction, including the reduction of sexually transmitted diseases, teen pregnancy, and sexual violence. The policy also identifies the responsibility of the administration to develop and implement age-appropriate lessons and the parent right to request that their child not participate in any given presentation which they feel is not appropriate for their in any given presentation which they feel is not appropriate for their child. Our policy is directly aligned with the expect point, our revisions to the third-grade learning outcomes and lessons regarding gender, role, and identity. We have also included school nurses and school counselors in the development of the proposed lessons. They have given feedback, we have revised based on their feedback, and they will be involved in professional learning with our teachers. As a result of feedback, we have created tighter guidelines for approval of new resources. Typically, those are stage-three opportunities. We are now asking in this curriculum for the to go through a tighter approval process. That has come as direct feedback over the past couple of months. We are increasing the professional development on how to create a neutral learning environment for students so they can all feel safe. We have made revisions to expectations for communications with families. We will go back to having yearly district-wide meetings that will be hosted by Mr. Ramspot to answer questions.
Well, health and physical education curriculum review that has been underway for more than eighteen months under our normal curriculum cycle. We are so fortunate to have several medical and health professionals within our community who have agreed to join us tonight and give us some of their valuable time and expertise. We have information on the back table about the panel I hope you're able to get, but I'd like to begin the discussion by asking each of our panelists to introduce themselves and provide a little background on your education and training as it relates to tonight's discussion. And we'll just start here on the right if we would.
All right. My name is Eric Spiegel. I'm a child and adolescent psychiatrist as well as a pediatrician. And I practice at St. Louis Children's Hospital, Washington University Medical School. And I'm here to avail myself to the panel who have any questions about mental health and the medical accuracy of any of the points that you have questions about in the curriculum. And I'll hand it over.
I'm Amy Sislow. I'm a professor of women, gender, and sexuality studies at Washington University. I teach a class called Intro to Women, Gender, and Sexuality Studies in addition to other classes that study the topic of sexuality and how it should be taught. One course of relevance is a youth studies class that I teach. And so I'm very familiar with recent research on sexuality education.
My name is Sarah Garwood. I'm a pediatrician at Washington University, St. Louis Children's Hospital, and I specialize in adolescent medicine. So I spend all of my time seeing and talking to teenagers and I'm knowledgeable about the medical literature about many of these subjects, but especially about sexual health education and LGBT inclusion in sexual health education.
I'm Abby Hollander. I'm a pediatrician at Washington University in St. Louis Children's Hospital, and my specialty is pediatric endocrinology and diabetes. And my area of expertise as related to the topics tonight have to do with children with gender variance and gender dysphoria, and I can speak to issues regarding the existence of gender identity and what happens when gender identity and physical characteristics don't match.
My name is Rachel Jarring. I am a child clinical psychologist with the Department of Psychology at St. Louis Children's Hospital. A significant portion of the patients that I see there are transgender or gender nonconforming. So I've spent the last several years that I've been at Children's Hospital developing expertise and becoming well-versed in this area.
My name is Spring Schmidt. I am the Division Director for the Health Promotion and Public Health Research for the St. Louis County Department of Public Health. I am also a doctoral candidate in Educational Psychology Research and Evaluation, so my training is educational. And my research focus was on the kind of school environments that create positive youth development for children on a variety of levels, especially ones that infuse value into health behaviors. And for the Health Department, we are concerned and interested in this topic, probably largely because of the impact that we see in our STI rates and the risky behaviors that we see for adolescents and the impact on a variety of other health issues.
Thank you again for giving us your time tonight. We sincerely appreciate it. I want to reiterate, we're going to cover the following main topics and then we'll dig into each one a little bit and some of the specifics, but the first topic will be, is the proposed curriculum framework medically accurate as required by law? Two, is it developmentally appropriate for the ages and grade levels proposed? And finally, is the curriculum written in a fact-based, neutral stance that can be taught without advocating that certain lifestyles or behavior are necessarily right, wrong, moral, or immoral? Easy, right? So let's get into that. I would also like to encourage our board members if to ask any questions that you would like. And if we need any clarifying questions from administrators, we have the experts here who can grab the microphone and respond as well if it's something that we need to have clarification from the administration. So first, I'd like to step back just a little bit and begin with an initial question about really why we're here. Panelists, as you know, there are some within the community who question why Parkway needs to teach sexual health in our schools. We have had it in Parkway for well over twenty years, but it is not required by the state of Missouri. So I ask you, in your professional opinion, why do we teach about sexual health in schools?
So, one of the biggest reasons that we do, especially when we talk about the St. Louis community, we have the second highest in St. Louis, all through the metropolitan region, rates of STIs and especially chlamydia and gonorrhea in the country. We have, the highest rates have been among the ages of fifteen to nineteen over the past decade. They're actually second this year, 2024 is going over that this year, but we have three thousand seven hundred and sixty-three cases of fifteen-to-nineteen-year-olds in 2015 with chlamydia, and we have another thousand with gonorrhea. We have a substantial problem. And when I look at the evidence, when I look at the CDC, when I look at research, which is a big part of my job on a variety of different topics, including chronic disease and all kinds of other things, I look to resources and research. We base our decisions on data. When I look at what's most effective in doing that, it has been things that have abstinence-based but also move towards comprehensive sexual health education. So we see many of these things. It's the recommendations of the CDC and there's a lot of evidence out there to support it.
Okay, so sometimes we talk about sexuality education and gender education as a way to prevent harmful outcomes, but there are also some real benefits in terms of talking about gender identity and sexuality in the business world or in any of the professions you're going to go into. Currently, human resources in various businesses are having a hard time understanding how to develop an atmosphere in their company that's affirming to gender nonconforming people. What I mean by that is the laws are changing rapidly. To recognize that people who are transgender have the same rights in the workplace as people who are cisgender, and by cisgender, I mean people whose gender identity, that means you identify as a woman, you were assigned the sex female at birth. That's what the term cisgender means. Transgender is when your identity, say, as a woman, is the opposite the sex assigned at birth. These are the kind of terms and the things that we're talking about teaching students. It's more than preventing harmful diseases, it's also preparing them for the future world. If they're going to be physicians, they need to know how to ask questions about sexuality and gender. And ask people, what is your pronoun? These are really important questions, and if you give them a head start on this, Parkway students are going to be ahead of other students.
I think the other comment I have is something that the students alluded to, which is, we know we have a problem in schools with school climates for LGBT kids. And one of the evidence-based ways to impact school climate is by more comprehensive sexual health education for all students. And that's been shown in the literature. So it also has an impact for that population of kids that we know is struggling and we know is not a small number of kids. I mean, this is a significant group of kids who really struggles in schools and dealing with school climate issues.
Any clarifying questions? Thank you for that. As I mentioned earlier, the state of Missouri requires that any curriculum related to sexual health be medically accurate. However, some have expressed concern that what has been proposed is not medically accurate and that parts of the curriculum are really addressing an ideology or perhaps conditions of mental illness that should be treated as such and don't really belong in the classroom setting. I know each of you have studied the proposed curriculum framework and have experience in this area. So my question for you is whether the curriculum is, in your opinion, indeed medically accurate? And if so, what assurances can you provide to members of the board that it in fact is?
So, going through, I do find that this is medically accurate. I'm uncertain exactly which portions the board feels is not medically accurate. I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions as are the rest of the panel here. I'm brought today, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, practice parameter on gay, lesbian, or bisexual orientation, gender nonconformity, and gender discordance in children and adolescents. And every major organization that is made up of pediatricians, psychiatrists, affirms the medical accuracy of what's contained in these lesson plans. And it seems extremely universal amongst professional organizations and happy to follow up on that.
Please, yes.
So when you determine medical accuracy, what data are you using to compare against our lesson plan to what is in the medical field?
Can you give an example of a lesson in question? That'd probably be easier than, you know, the whole curriculum.
So let's talk about gender identity, sexual orientation, for example. So if we're going to be talking about these topics in the classroom, what information is medically accurate and how do you determine that? Because in some of the research, and perhaps you could give us some examples of this, that not all medical community agrees with what is happening within the manifestations of LGBTQ. And so how do we wrap that up into being factual information that's provided in the classroom at an age-appropriate level?
I'm really glad you asked that question, and I'll comment first, but I think probably everybody on the panel would like to comment on that. I think it is false to have the idea that there is a large discrepancy in the medical or scientific community about these issues. There are a few outlier professionals who, in any case I can think of, for personal religious reasons, may have altered views, but for the general mainstream medical and scientific community, the concepts are very well-accepted and are supported by substantial medical literature and consensus statements. The first time I spoke to the board, I named a list of some of those organizations. I'll name them again because they're probably familiar to most people here. The American Medical Association, the American Public Health Association, the Society for Adolescent Medicine, the American Academy of Pediatrics. And I'll let the other panelists bring on their consensus groups also. So, you know, I want to bring this up also because I disagree with the idea that this panel is somehow biased. We are bringing with us large consensus organizations from our professions and we are familiar with the literature because this is the field that we work in. So there may be, as I said, a few medical experts out there who do not work in the field, who have personal religious views that are different, but there isn't some big conversation going on and there's not some big discrepancy in the community of people who actually work with these kids.
So, along the lines of issues regarding gender identity, it's been known for decades, since maybe the 1950s, that there's the existence in each of us, part of our psyche, something that is our gender identity. And it's known that it's in place typically by the age of two or so. And to the extent that people understand it currently, it's not felt to be something that's very changeable. And in most circumstances, someone's gender identity agrees with their physical characteristics, with their assignment at birth, but sometimes it does not. The occurrence in nature of people who are born with what we call intersex disorders have given us a lot of information about the existence of gender identity and how even if you raise a child in a certain manner, if it doesn't agree with the gender identity, that they will then reverse and want to live as they feel they are. And around the 1980s, 1990s, there was a Center for Transgender Health that still exists today in Amsterdam, where they've treated hundreds and hundreds of people with gender identity disorders or what we call now gender dysphoria. And people realized that helping individuals transition to agree with their identity was much healthier and provided better outcomes than trying to accommodate the person to their physical characteristics. And so I think what's changed over time is our understanding of how best to treat individuals that have gender dysphoria, but the fact that it exists and the fact that people are going to need our care, that hasn't changed. And so the curriculum reflects that gender variance does exist and that you might encounter individuals that have gender dysphoria. I think that that's very good and as Samantha mentioned, that she didn't feel that she has to always be teaching her peers what this means, that they can learn from their educators.
So I just wanted to echo what everyone else said. The American Psychological Association published Guidelines for Psychological Practice with Transgender and Gender Nonconforming People, August 2015. And including gender nonconforming as an aspect of diversity in our training is becoming standard practice in graduate programs all across the country. It's becoming an important part of our clinical experience. And I just also wanted to mention that gender diversity is recognized to be a normal part of our human experience. It's not something new, it's recognized across cultures throughout history, but it's something that we're beginning to develop a stronger and stronger research basis for. And like we've all said, all of our disciplines have guidelines and have practice parameters around this.
I would also add that one of the reasons that we look to consensus organizations, and I would add the CDC to Dr. Garwood's list because they also list, especially some of the definitions that are being included in the new curriculum, are the definitions that they are listing for LGBT issues, for gender identity, for role, as well as other issues around the sexual health education. One of the reasons we look to that is because there is division in the medical community, but I'll tell you that that's true on every single medical topic you can name. There are still medical persons that write that tobacco does not cause disease, and we have a wide variety of very direct evidence that it in fact does. We have evidence that obesity is not a disease. There are doctors and medical studies, there is always going to be, in science, a diversity of opinion. And that's why you need to look to where you see the body of evidence going towards. And that's why we do look to consensus organizations who look at the entire body of evidence when there is, but entire consensus where everyone agrees on every single point that plays out in a health issue, I can't think of a single health topic where that exists. And the other thing that I would say, particularly when we get into issues of LGBT, we not only know that the consensus organizations are in fact in support of a more neutral environment and a positive environment that promotes tolerance and respect for each other in that environment. I would also say that we also know that we may not have a full consensus whether or not there is a particular genetic or predisposition or anything like that. We have a lot of evidence in multiple areas. But I would say that what we do know is that the environments that we create, that children that have gender identity issues that they grow up in, it's the environments that we create that they are engaged in that do cause them direct harm. We know that it's environments that have a lot of bullying, we know that helps increase the rates of suicide, which are particularly high amongst LGBTQ students. And so we know that it's the environments that we have control over, the environments that we're creating for the children to operate in, that are determining more of their health outcomes. outcomes than their gender identity is.
Can I ask a question? Sure. It's a two-part question. When is it age-appropriate to really get explicit with some of these topics? And in your opinion, as a panel, is there anything missing in our curriculum?
So if I could just jump in, I think we're going to go there, or I'm going to go there here in just a few minutes.
All right, sorry.
So with all due respect, if you can hold that one.
Well, then maybe just the one part, is there, do you think that there's something that's missing in our curriculum?
Well, as someone who teaches intergender women, gender, and sexuality studies, and it takes me 15 weeks, meeting students three hours a week, from my perspective, there's a lot missing, but you have a great start. I would just encourage you to recognize the distinction between sex, sexuality, and gender. I see in your curriculum that there's just a little bit of conflation of those, and I would be happy to consult on the correct vocabulary from a women, gender, and sexual. And I keep saying women, gender, and sexuality studies. And for those people who graduated from college more than 10 years ago, it is now an established discipline, it is a department, we have a national organization, and we have basic standards of how to teach sexuality, gender, and sex.
Anyone else to respond to Mr. Jacobs's question?
So I would just add that I'm impressed with the level of participation that you've engaged in for where you are. So even if it's not where you will always be, or if there are things that are maybe not there right now, or that can progress as you move forward, I do want to say that I, actually, I commend the amount of transparency that they've had through the process, and the amount of engagement that they've had with experts, with the amount of engagement with the families, with the students, with faculty. I think it makes it organic to where you are for your community values. And so if it progresses from there, you know, that's great. But I also think it's commendable specifically as far as what's missing. I think that where you, what you have in terms of the participatory process that you've developed is worth being where you are.
A follow-up question, if I could, to this discussion. What is the pervasiveness of the transgender sexual identity issues in society today?
So if you're wondering, so what's the incidence, you know, how often does it occur? The answer to that is we don't know. So you can, in the literature, it's anywhere from maybe .01% to something closer to .1%.
Let's follow up on why we don't know. Because US Census. Sorry. I teach transgender studies, too. I'm coming at you from all angles. One reason we don't know the rate or the incidence of transgender identity is in part because we've never asked. US Census have never asked people to identify as transgender. We've never asked people to identify as intersex, though we do have better understanding of the rates of intersex conditions, just because we know what causes a person to be intersex. We don't have stats. There's no global statistics. But due to the emergence of transgender movements in the 1990s, there's much more visibility now. So people are making themselves known, and I believe there is some discussion with the next census to actually ask. Then we'll be able to answer your question.
And there was, in New Zealand, there was a study, a survey of 8,000 high school students, and they self-identified as transgender or not. And of those 8,000, 1.2% identified as transgender.
I think in the curriculum, there's something a lot less controversial that's being taught about gender role behavior and gender nonconformity that I don't think that anybody, I would expect that anybody in the room that has read it thinks it's non-controversial, like gender role behavior of staying at home with the kids is not a female role behavior, even though that is something that we used to think. And that more and more people are choosing to behave in ways that are non-gender role conforming, and we think of this generally as a good thing. And I just feel like maybe that's getting lost in the shuffle of what's actually being taught in third grade and seventh grade in this curriculum.
Sexuality and gender roles is some conflated a little bit in the discussion. I think it's important to make that distinction, that gender roles may not have anything to do with sexuality, as well as gender identity. I think they're three different things, really.
Well, we do have a Star Wars heroine now, right?
Another question that I would have is, I think there's some confusion about how to separate out, or it seems that some of the lesson plans really don't correlate with sexual education. And for example, in the 10th grade lesson, there is an activity to divide students by, and use a chart, and there would be a name of something, so a category for lesbian, a category for bisexual, a category for asexual, a category for gay. And then each of the students is supposed to explain what is the pro of that label and what is the con of that label. Now how does that become a sexual education curriculum?
Do I get to take this one?
Okay, so there does seem to be some confusion between thinking about sexuality in terms
of that meaning intercourse, or relations, or desire, and to also talk about the emergence of sexual identities. To put it briefly, it's hard to put it briefly, because I studied this from the medieval period all the way to today. So I'm going to talk about identities as a nuanced political identity. So when you talk about those terms, if the curriculum is asking students to think through the meanings of those terms, that's not necessarily, how shall I put this? It would be part of a comprehensive sexuality education in that you're thinking through the meanings of the terms, and how a term can still leave people out, or whether a term can be inclusive. Like is asexuality up there in the list of terms? Right, so thinking through these different terms can be really beneficial for students who are questioning. Sometimes when you see the acronym LGBTQIAA, one of the Q's sometimes stands for questioning. And that's to acknowledge that for people who are not heterosexual, or people who are not cisgender, sometimes it takes a long time to really think through those categories and say, do any of them apply to me? So thinking through the categories is part of a process of identity formation. But you can probably speak more to that.
So it's to go through responses on a poster sheet, so you're supposed to see the types of people below: man, woman, gay man, lesbian, transgender male, and bisexual. And then ask the following questions. Do all people fit these descriptions? Where do we get these perceptions or impressions from? What makes someone think that certain people do certain things? What has influenced your perception or impressions of certain types of people? And then see the possible answers below.
Yeah, so basically, we're just teaching contemporary terms, and the correct term is trans-mand. You would not say trans-male, so please edit that. So in order, teaching these terms, again, to go back to the business perspective, it would be awesome if people in HR knew these terms. It would make it easier for them to tailor their companies to be inclusive of all identities. But talking through the definition of the term is incredibly useful in differentiating the identities. Does that answer your question?
I guess I'm still trying to find the sexual education component in this lesson. And does that really fit?
Can you define to me what you're thinking when you say sexual education?
So I guess we're thinking about sexual activity, thinking about the STDs, and that this seems more a lesson in labeling people and accepting differences. And should that really be part of the sexual part of this, or is it really more, something more a civic?
Yes, people who are not heterosexual need their sexualities and genders affirmed.
Yeah, I think it's a question of whether you're going to include LGBTQ kids or not. And I think what Parkway's trying to do is say, yes, we want to include you in our sexual education program. And in order to do that, we have to acknowledge terms, and we have to talk through different labels, and we have to have, you know, everybody sort of understand, because people may have very different ideas, right? So I think it's about being inclusive to that group.
And one of the other things that we've talked about is ramping up our character education program, particularly in the high schools. I mean, we're doing a very good job of it in the elementary schools and the middle schools, but it's still kind of left wavering in our high schools. So wouldn't incorporating some of these ideas so that we're not isolating a particular group of students, meaning the LGBTQ, but rather we're also including a whole array of our diverse population in a character education program at the high school level?
So I would just suggest, instead of making a list of anomalies, to also include heterosexual in your list. That should broaden it, so that you're not trying to label the other, but trying to label the normative standard.
And I would, so I said that I was working on my dissertation, and I'm doing it under the Center for Character and Citizenship at UMSL. And I can tell you that one of the reasons that I would include that also in your sexuality education is because it's not just about, it is definitely about including those LGBTQ students that you may have, but it is also about, again, that environment that you're setting and how people treat each other in that environment. So looking at those labels is not only about helping individuals understand how they self-identify or how they can feel affirmed and included, but also in having other students that may be fine with the label they are, thinking about how they label others, and thinking about how they include their understanding of sexual activity and how those labels are applied to others. And they make stereotypical decisions, they make choices, and they make, they have behaviors that are generated by how they feel about those labels. And so it isn't just about what the experience is for maybe, you know, a particular student or a subset of students, it is about the experience that all of your students create as far as an environment that's tolerant and respectful, and understanding the power of labeling in terms of what that means for healthy sexual activity, or healthy relationships and interpersonal relationships for all of them. And I think from a character standpoint, that's actually something that you would want to set for your school.
Yes, Ms. Feldman.
Dr. Spiegel, this one's for you. In your medical position, opinion based on your psychiatric background, does teaching a comprehensive curriculum enhance mental health or harm mental health? We had a citizen statement before from a woman who's a school counselor, and she was talking about the level of depression and suicidal thoughts and things like that among middle schoolers. And I'm wondering what your medical opinion is, knowledge or lack of knowledge, which is better for our children's mental health?
I'm going to go with knowledge.
Okay.
I think that stigma, prejudice, and discrimination cause mental health problems for marginalized youth. And if we want to increase stigma, prejudice, and discrimination, we will teach ignorance.
Or not teach at all.
And I, sorry, I have one thing to add to that. I think that there is a fear that if you ask a question about something, or you teach something, like if you teach about anal sex, or you teach about oral sex, that a student is going to go out and do that, that it's somehow giving them permission to do that, or that it's okay to do that. But we've also, I've also heard the same fear. If you ask about suicide, does that increase the likelihood of someone committing suicide? What we know is that is not true. If you ask someone if they have suicidal thoughts, they're not going to start having suicidal thoughts, but you are providing that person with an opportunity to be able to share what they are feeling, what they are experiencing, and in this case, have that experience affirmed.
In some lesson plans, in sixth and seventh grade, the students are learning together as boys and girls, males and females together. What is the benefit to doing that versus separating the genders out between boys and girls, to be able to talk about some of these topics in a more comfortable, perhaps, way that some students may not like being grouped together with boys and girls together on some of these topics?
So developmentally, it's a good time for them to begin to have those discussions, especially since, as they do get into interpersonal relationships at one point or another, even if they're not there at that time, it's important to be able to make sure that you can state your value, your beliefs, your knowledge and understanding, your questions to a person of the opposite gender. We need to be able to make sure that we're able to have conversations, or to anyone else that you might be engaging in any kind of personal relationship with, even if it's friendship. We need to be able to, and then one of the things I do appreciate about this curriculum is it does begin to form some of those communication understandings, so that we become comfortable enough with the topic that we don't allow misunderstandings between people to result in behaviors and activities that one of them may not be comfortable, or both of them may not be comfortable or ready for. But it encourages a communication, and I think we need to have communication that's present in the classroom, as well as in many, many, many other environments, for people to be prepared to engage in interpersonal relationships.
The social science research goes both ways on this topic. And one of the issues is for not separating out, is the idea that there are plenty of children who are non-binary, non-gender conforming, or how you include trans kids, that's one, like pro for keeping everyone together. However, there is some social science research to understand that sexuality and one's sense of oneself, in terms of being a sexual being, is a gendered experience. And there are different ways that boys and girls are taught to understand themselves as sexual beings, and that research shows that there can be some benefits to separating out. The harm as a school district in separating out is that you would have to decide who's a girl and who's a boy. And it would probably be in your best interest, under the new directives of Title IX, to not separate out. It becomes, there are multiple levels to that, and one is a legal level, because the new directives under Title IX protect children based on gender identity, and they shouldn't be discriminated against based on that.
I'm kind of slow. Don't say anything, Dee. I'm just wondering how confident I can be that we've got great teachers, but they're not clinicians. Are they going to be able to teach this in a way that, you know, you're not going to be in the classroom, it's going to be somebody that usually has another subject matter and that this is added on? We may do some professional development, but are they going to be comfortable enough and knowledgeable enough to really teach it in a way that's going to help students? Or can they do more harm?
One question would be, did you study women, gender, and sexuality studies in undergrad? Was that part of your curriculum? There's that.
I guess I just wonder why this is so drastically different than any other content area that teachers are asked to take on. And that might just be a question for you guys. Maybe I'm not aware of why it is, but it seems very learnable, if that's a word.
Ron? There you go. You have to grab that one.
Hello, I'm Ron Ramspot. Nobody wants to be me. That's a huge concern. It's been a concern in our district for a while. It was pretty much brought to the surface in our program evaluation, that the quality and consistency of teaching sex education, which we've taught actually more than 30 years in Parkway. We've disclosed our dirty laundry, okay? And we're trying to make amends on that. We're trying to do a much better job of teaching health education, quality health education... We're trying to do a much better job of teaching health education, quality health education, which includes sex education and has been for over 30 years in Parkway School District. A lot of the conversations and a lot of the curriculum, I've asked my teachers over and over again, how much of this is new? And they said, "Not much, Ron. This is not new." The curriculum had a lot of holes in it. And we went through a lot of different phases of curriculum development, even the adoption of understanding by design, which we had to reformat our curriculum. So there were a lot of holes, no doubt. And the consistency was lacking, no doubt. And the quality was lacking, no doubt. But we have steps, we have guidelines, and we are going to commit ourselves to providing the support for our teachers so that they can teach these subjects in an appropriate way. And with the people around me, not just the panelists in front of you here tonight, there are so many other people that have been helping in this effort. And I think we'll do a much better job.
Lisa, Dr. Meredith.
Ron, is it accurate that all of the teachers who will be teaching this curriculum are certified health teachers?
All of our teachers that teach health education are certified by Missouri to teach health education. Sorry.
I would add one more thing. Even if they're not fully comfortable with this, the, the fact is the curriculum focuses on the idea that it's okay to have this conversation. It's okay to have a conversation about topics that you might not feel wholly comfortable with in order for you to become informed about what, what you do feel, what you do believe, what is important to you, how you do interact with others. And it's okay for the teacher to not necessarily feel like they have every single answer to this for every student every time that they get a question. And so I understand that people will feel uncomfortable about that occasionally. And they're certified, they're trained, they'll have the resources and options to, to further their training, to have mentors with each other, and to help themselves and each other through that process as they go through it, just like they would on any other curricular topic, especially when you change curriculum topics.
An article that I pulled out of Journal of School Health titled, "Coping and Survival Skills: A Role School Personnel Play Regarding Support for Bullied Sexual Minority Oriented Youth." And this actually talks about how important it is that our school personnel are trained, and not only the people who teach it, but the people that are there daily with the, with the students that provide a safe school environment. And when they see these sexual minority youth being bullied, that they can swoop in, help them, get the counseling that they need. And that it's not just a health teacher's responsibility, but I would say that it's the whole building's responsibility to make a safe environment for our students.
So thank you, Ms. Hopper, for bringing that up. That is one addition we have also made to our plan that I did not mention earlier tonight. As a result of feedback, I shared that our school counselors and our school nurses will be part of our professional learning. But Ron and I have also talked about at the elementary level, doing development for the gen ed classroom teachers and special educators so that if a student brings the conversation from health class into the regular classroom, that our gen ed and special ed teachers are also equipped to support the students with the conversation. So not as in-depth, but what we don't want is a response from a general ed or a special ed teacher whenever the students come back to the classroom that would not be one of a positive social environment, unintentionally. We don't think it would ever happen intentionally, but unintentionally. So thank you for bringing that up because I did not mention that change. And that has come based on feedback we, we have received the last two months.
Now with that, you mentioned about school counselors and nurses. They're going to be, are they going to be involved in actually teaching some of this now? Or what's, what, what is their exact role going to be?
At this point, the role is for them to be involved in development. They may join the teachers if that is something that they, the teacher and the counselor and/or nurse choose to do, but that is not their primary role. However, I would anticipate that with the comfort, comforting environment that our nurses and counselors all provide in our buildings, that if students have additional questions or if they're processing something, that that would be a resource for the students to go to individually.
Kind of got a little bit into something that, that I wanted to make another distinction here, that we're talking about curriculum, and that goes a little bit to as well. We're not talking about accommodation. The whole bathroom question and all that stuff, that's a whole separate conversation. But, you know, that'll get sorted out one way or the other. But that's not part of this discussion.
So I just looked, I'm sorry, Mr. Applebaum, please.
I just wanted to, there, the, part of the issue here seems to be with regards to tolerance versus advocacy. Do you guys, are you familiar with any research with regards to comprehensive sex or anything like that translating into, you know, more people identifying as transgender or being LGBTQ? I, I mean, has there been any research that indicates that if kids learn about this stuff, that they're going to be more apt to participate in it?
Oh, well, first I would say the only known sort of comprehensive studies have been done of comprehensive sexual education. The primary benefits that they found was that it reduces the frequency of engagement in sexual activity. It reduces the rates of pregnancy, it reduces the rates of STIs, it reduces the rates of, it decreases the likelihood of early sexual activity. So there's no known actual sort of association at all with any change or difference or anything like that based on the education that's received at all.
And just to echo that, gender identity is something that is not a choice. It's not something that you just decide. It's something that is a stable part of our personalities of who we are. So just hearing about it or talking about it or being asked about it isn't going to make you go, oh, no, that sounds like a good choice for me. It's something that, you know, if a student starts talking about it after hearing about it, it's not something that was put into their heads. It's something that they were already thinking about or already was part of their identity, but maybe did not express.
I just looked at my watch, it's a little after nine. So I have a couple of important questions that I think, and I really want to ask because it gets to some of the things I heard in the room a little earlier. So if, if you don't mind, I'd like to move on to the next topic or question. And one theme that we continue to hear and we heard it tonight is this feeling that the proposal, proposed curriculum goes too much too far, or too far too fast, too far too fast. And that has to do with whether the proposed curriculum is developmentally appropriate for students at the ages and grade levels proposed. As you all have read through the framework, what are your thoughts on this? And is the proposal developmentally appropriate? And at some point, I want to get to some of the specifics of things that were talked about, and we may need some clarification from Ron or Lisa on some of the things that I heard. But to the panel, developmentally appropriate, what, to what degree based on what you've seen?
So I felt that the curriculum, when I reviewed it, was developmentally appropriate. I think one of the big questions I heard multiple times tonight was about the terms oral and anal sex in the seventh grade. And so I was thinking about that today a little bit and actually did a little research to kind of think about whether I felt like this was developmentally appropriate or not. And the, what I found is that the Guttmacher Institute found that by the age of 14, about 10% of males have had sex. So through adolescence, the numbers of adolescents who've had sex, you know, go up a little bit each year with the average age of intercourse being about age 17. So if you think that in seventh grade, you're about 13 years old, and by age 14, 10% of males have had sex, to me, it seems like a developmentally appropriate place to talk about sexual behaviors. And I think the other thing that has been difficult for people is the words anal sex and oral sex. But if you're gonna have a sex education program that is inclusive of LGBT people, then you have to recognize that everyone has heterosexual sex. And even heterosexuals have oral and anal sex. But I think part of the reason this is such a trigger is because of the resistance to including the LGBT population into the conversation. And I'm just being very candid about what I think some of the resistance is. So in, so in my opinion, knowing what we know about when the onset of sexual activity is, it makes sense to start at around age 13. And I'll also say that in physicians' offices, beginning around age 12, physicians, pediatricians routinely screen kids for sexual behaviors in confidential interviews starting at that age. So, I mean, those behaviors are screened for beginning around age 12 to 13 in physicians' offices.
I would like to ask for a point of clarification. And that is because we hear this, the seventh grade anal and oral sex. And I was surprised when I talked to you in the hallway, Dr. Meredith, you said, "Well, actually, that's, that's not new." I don't, and you said, "I'm not sure where that, how that got communicated, but we have been doing that." And then you explained why. And if, could I get a clarification on that because that was helpful for me to understand?
So I and Ron may jump in and help me or even correct me if I need to be corrected. So in the past, that has come under the guise of reducing risky behavior and reducing the risk of sexually transmitted infections. And so belief by some youth that the only way to get a sexually transmitted infection is through vaginal intercourse. And so to help our students understand that those infections actually travel other ways as well. With the, remember what I shared about our enduring understanding that the only way to 100% prevent sexually transmitted infection is abstinence. And so to help students understand that if they're going to prevent an STI, being abstinent means abstinence from anal sex and oral sex as well. I think the conversation now is we become more inclusive and embracing LGBTQ, I think we have other reasons now to also include that within our curriculum. So Ron, I don't know if you want to add?
A lot of our guidance for what's age appropriate comes from standards, whether it be state, national standards, certainly respecting the fact that we want to be sensitive to the needs and the requests of our community as well. So that has to be all factored in to our decision about what's, what's appropriate for Parkway students versus appropriate for a 13-year-old, okay? So we, we actually made a phone call, or I actually made a phone call to the Department of Health and Senior Services seeking for their advice. I knew what the auditing documents were, the Health Education Curriculum Analysis Tool, developed by CDC. And we also have the new National Sexuality Education Standards that were released in 2012. Both these documents are, were developed by experts in health, public health, in medicine, psychology. They're the people we go to to make sure that things are appropriate for our kids. So these topics do fall in line with those standards. And it also was, in our survey results, something that not only students felt was important to discuss, but our parents as well, not all obviously, but a large, enough of our community felt it was important.
From a developmental standpoint, it's really important that we use correct terminology when we are talking about these issues with students. And anal sex, oral sex, and vaginal sex are correct and medically appropriate terms. So it's not about sort of the, the, you know, a popular cultural understanding or any kind of references, anyone else may have understood any of those terms. It's about couching them in terms of the education that they're receiving and having them understand the risks and consequences of those, of each of those things. And to understand that they, they can all lead to sexual, they are all sexual activity. They can all lead to different kinds of STIs. They are all part of the process. And it's just a medically accurate term that describes the act. I would also say that just to the point for that, children at the age of 13 are emancipated minors in terms of their sexual and reproductive health choices. And so they do need a variety of information because they do engage with the healthcare system as a, as an emancipated minor at the age of 13. And so they need access to this kind of information so, because not all of their healthcare experiences they have will be experiences, and I know that many places do encourage parents to be participants in that process, but they're not required to be.
Seventh grade, we have 12-year-olds also. So I understand, I mean, seventh grade is between 12 and 13, and eighth grade is between 13 and 14. And I, I don't know, I, I have a middle schooler and I've not seen the curriculum talking about anal sex right now. It hasn't, so there might be some teachers that may not be teaching it, even though perhaps it's in the curriculum. It's, it's not necessarily happening. And I think that there would be a lot more parents that would be more comfortable if this were pulled to the eighth grade level rather than into the seventh grade level. I, I appreciate the whole STD, STI conversation. But this is in seventh grade, the lesson plan proposes intro to human sexuality. And so we're, we're introducing them to human sexuality. But yet we're also talking about this very interesting concept about anal sex. And, and the lesson plan actually describes it as pleasurable. And there could be some controversy about that. And so I think that it's still kind of wavering on whether or not it's really appropriate to do that with that particular age group.
I think the point we're trying to make when we say, you know, in introduction to sexuality is that sexuality is more than vaginal sex. And so the intro has to include that sexuality is more than vaginal sex. Do you know what I'm saying?
So I do have any point of clarification because it's come up a lot. Seventh grade, have, have we already been doing that in the, in the seventh grade curriculum? Talking about it? Because that's, to me, that was an important, important point, important question.
So I think as, as we learned in our program evaluation that we presented to the board in April of 2014, we learned that there were inconsistencies between the written curriculum and the taught curriculum. And that is part of what we are trying to do now, is we are trying to ensure that our written curriculum and our taught curriculum are aligned. Another piece of feedback that we received in that was that we needed to do better at communicating with our families. Well, we haven't been able to communicate clearly because there has been a gap between the written curriculum and the taught curriculum. So yes, it has been in the taught curriculum. It was in the realm of reducing risky behaviors to help our students understand how STIs are spread. So that was the context of where it was, where it is in the curriculum. But again, we have a gap and we are trying to rectify that gap so that we can better communicate with our families so that they can work with us in, in our endeavors to support them in educating their child.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jacob.
One of the questions that came up tonight from some parents, and we've heard it in the past too, is what about some of the children? We're pretty inclusive in our class. We don't exclude anybody from our classes. And one segment would be children with disabilities, autistic and other things. In your experience, how does this come across to that kind of student? And I know autism is a wide spectrum too. But how, how, what would your advice be on how to handle this kind of information with those kinds of students?
I wouldn't make a blanket statement about that because it's very likely to be based on, on individual children. But I think that's why we do differentiated instruction on a regular basis in every topic that's taught. Differentiated instruction is a fairly normal part of, of all teacher activities. We do that for math and reading and social studies and, and every other side, you know, if you, if you think, if the teacher, because of what they understand about the individual child, that is a very individualized. It's not a blanket thing that I would make about any particular disability or issue that's child might have in that particular circumstance about whether or not that means that all children are not able to participate in that conversation.
I want to go back to the, yes, please, Ms. Mogerman, yes.
So according to state law, we do differentiate. You know, our state requires that we meet individual students' needs where they are. And particularly for this unit, according to state law, we do allow And particularly for this unit, according to state law, we do allow opt-out. And when a family chooses to opt-out, an individual plan is made with the family and the teachers to determine the best learning experience as an opportunity. So, as we move forward, we know that we need to continue to give support with that. With opt-out, it can be opt-out of a single lesson, or it could be opt-out of the complete unit. And again, those are individual plans. So, we can put together parameters of things to be considered when a student opts out, but to put together, if a student opts out, this is what will happen, then we aren't meeting the individual needs of students. And so we, there needs to be some flexibility within that planning process.
Dr. Meredith, how much flexibility?
My understanding is that teachers are going to have flexibility to be able to modify their curriculum on these topics based on what they think will be appropriate for the class that they have. And will they be taught that? Will they be instructed that? That they, they do have that freedom to back off on some subject matters if they don't feel that their class as a whole is ready for it.
So, with all curriculum in Parkway, we have guaranteed learning outcomes. Our teachers are hired professionals, and they design learning experiences that align to those agreed-upon educational outcomes. So, what they teach, if they're teaching the Parkway guaranteed curriculum, is not negotiable. That's decided at the district with representation from all buildings. That's what we're actually asking you to approve in the curriculum framework, is the understandings, the essential learnings. As far as how they design lessons, that's their professional talent and skills that they bring. We hire them to do that. So, they design those lessons based on Parkway learning principles and based on best pedagogy. Now, with this particular unit, we have more set model lessons, and there will be, as I shared earlier, based on feedback, more specific criteria to have materials or guest speakers approved to come in, so that we can ensure that they're aligned with our beliefs, with the curriculum and the parameter, and that they're from a neutral stance. Because that is something that's really important for us as we look for materials and outside resources to come in. But as far as the day-to-day lesson design, teachers design that, but they design it to align with the guaranteed learnings, and those aren't negotiable. And that's with all curriculum areas.
Quick question. House Bill 501, I didn't see it in the curriculum, but in House Bill 501, it talks about some of the consequences from sexual activity, and one of the consequences is adolescent pregnancy, and that it should be taught in the curriculum, the advantages of adoption. Is that in our curriculum? Because I didn't see it.
I'm going to defer to Ron.
Including the adoption of special needs children and the process involved in making an adoption plan.
It is not currently in our curriculum, the option for, about adoption.
So, you're going to go past the go and go right to jail?
I think, no, that brings up a good point. Right, I think there's, this is a process. And certainly, while we have gone on record as saying that there's not huge changes, there are changes. And we're trying to, as quickly as we can, but as patiently as we can, make good choices about what is included in the curriculum. And certainly, conversations have come up about adoption, abortion, masturbation, and they're all, at this point, we don't have it in the curriculum. But we're trying to identify where it is appropriate and when it's appropriate.
But isn't it part of the state law that says it has to be in there?
We do talk about unplanned pregnancies, okay, in our 10th grade unit. And certainly, adoption is a conversation that is brought up as an option in our classroom discussions. But we don't necessarily have a lesson dedicated to adoption.
I will review, review House Bill 501.
Thank you.
And ensure that if we need to make revisions, they are made properly.
Can I also ask, with some of the resources that are being used and some speakers that are being brought in, there seems to be a bit of an imbalance with discussions around abstinence, and that we don't have a lot of speakers and resource materials focusing on abstinence. And we also don't have speakers from like an adoption agency, for example, coming in to talk to our students about unplanned pregnancy and what those options might be. We have some other, in my opinion, questionable resources and speakers that are going to be brought in to talk about other things. So, I would like to get some ideas on where that is.
Thank you, thank you for that feedback. We can certainly review our list of resources and see if we can expand that. I do want to remind you, though, that with speakers and with resources, we will have a list of approved speakers and a list of approved resources, but that doesn't guarantee that they'll be in every classroom, because that is the lesson design at the teacher's response, where the teachers are designing the lessons. And so we won't say every fifth grade classroom or every seventh grade classroom has to have this speaker come, but it's, that they have to teach these concepts. And then the teachers can teach it using the sample lesson plans, or they can bring in those resources that have been approved. So, I just want to make sure we're really clear that in, not in any of our curriculum areas do we say, "You have to do this lesson, then this lesson, then this lesson." And we're not going to do that here either. We're giving the outcomes in our sample lessons.
So, the list of resources and materials and the videos that are currently on the proposed lesson plans, those we would be approving?
So, there are two sets of resources on the, the learning plans. There are sets of resources for teachers to read to build their background knowledge and to develop their understanding. And then there's a list of resources that the teachers can use with students. The list of resources with students are specific parts of resources, not necessarily everything within a publication or that an organization provides. Is that correct, Ron?
Okay.
And we will, I will make a note that we will review our list of resources and see if we can be more inclusive as we review House Bill 501 and see if we need to make some revisions.
I would like to mention that, please keep in mind that the resources were only selected after we developed, as a community, developed learning outcomes for the sexual, for the healthy relationships, sexual health unit. So, we didn't really necessarily go to the curriculum and look for curriculum resources that we liked and felt we would like to include. We developed outcomes without those resources being considered. And then we went to find resources that would align to our Parkway learning outcomes.
I do want to honor our panel's time and make sure we're getting our money's worth, although I know you're not getting paid.
Thank you.
Back to the original question, because I want to move on to the last question, but this, this concept of too much, too fast, and I do want to get a question posed to the panel, and the question is this. Because I feel in the room, and I have two high school teenagers, so I'm living this myself, and I, I feel that there is a concern that the conversation itself, the fact that we're having conversations, such as the things we're talking about, that will lead to increased sexual activity among our students. I feel that, that is a concern, is what I'm saying. So, what I need to hear is, in your medical opinion, is there any evidence to support or refute that, or neither?
I'm not aware of any evidence that supports that. And I am aware of specific literature that shows, for example, if you talk about contraception, you don't make someone more likely to engage in sex, for example. That's fairly clearly shown. Education about contraception does not make someone more likely, that does not affect their decision to have sex. That decision is made separately. They are less likely to get pregnant if they have sex, but it doesn't affect their decision to have sex, for example. And anybody, everyone else can comment too about that.
The CDC listed 62 studies that had 83 arms that went throughout the entire United States that they reviewed in terms of these kinds of issues. And they overwhelmingly found that this kind of sexual education does not, in fact, lead to those kinds of outcomes in terms of increase. In fact, it decreases sexual activity. It also delays the onset of early sexual activity, and it also decreases sexually risky activity. It lowers the number, frequency of partners. It lowers for people who do engage in sex. So, it's actually far more substantially supported by evidence that it, in fact, does exactly the opposite of that.
Should it be something in the curriculum about pornography? Does that have an impact on when people act or don't act? Or is that a non? Do you hear the question? Because maybe it depends on the person.
I don't know any literature about acting or not acting based on exposure to pornography. I'm just not familiar with that. I think talking about the dangers of being online excessive amounts of time, sexting, I think a conversation about those pieces is actually very important, because I think those are real risks to teens. Parents should absolutely be supervising and limiting online time and online behaviors. Sexting is a, is a major issue, and kids need to have education about the risks and dangers of that. So, I think those things are very important. I can do some research, but I'm just not as familiar with the literature about pornography.
I actually just accidentally checked out a book that was published this year that focus, it focuses more on girls and their exposure to explicit images online. And the studies within this work, and it was a Canadian publication, it was actually funded by the Canadian government for them to study more about how to do sex education. And they were just talking about the need to allow children to understand that even though they're seeing a lot of imagery of people having sex and even doing a lot of things on YouTube, doesn't mean that that's expected of you. So, I mean, it's a useful conversation to have since there's so much more out there, to just disentangle what you're seeing and normative expectations.
I think that extends to just pop culture in general. I mean, I don't think you have to go down the pornography rabbit hole, but just the sexualization of the culture. I think a comment, a question, a discussion with students about that, and do we feel like this represents us, or is that kind of odd and strange, and that's not expected of 13, 14, 15-year-olds, would be a good discussion to have, yes.
I agree. I also think that developmentally, it's not a bad idea to make sure that as we're teaching communication skills, that it's really extremely difficult in this very, very connected age to limit children's exposure to that kind of imagery. And so making, very much making sure that they're able to have the sort of communication skills and tools to allow them to engage with parents and other, like, trusted adults about what this means, what it does mean as far as normalizing their sexual, understanding of sexually appropriate behaviors, is not a bad idea.
I have a question for Dr. Meredith. I mean, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, the timeliness of whether or not this is necessary and what that, does, you mentioned sexting with regards to the part of the curriculum. Obviously, there's a whole host of other, you know, safety issues with regards to internet involving sex. Is that addressed in the current curriculum?
So, it is probably addressed in our taught curriculum, but not in our written curriculum, because the last time we actually put written curriculum, we actually wrote it, put it in the computer, that wasn't an issue that needed to be addressed in society with our students. You know, it wasn't as prevalent, the sexting, the online predators, helping students know how to be safe. Our students have access to the international world at a much younger age through the internet than what they did just a couple of short years ago. And so that's one of those gaps between our written curriculum and our taught curriculum. But our, our teachers know that our students need to be kept safe. They need to know how to keep themselves safe. And again, as I mentioned in my opening comments, many of the topics that we are talking about, school is not the place where they're being introduced. They're being introduced in society, and our students are bringing them to the classrooms. And so we need to empower our teachers through clear guidelines of how to create that safe environment for the conversations to be supported in factual manners.
Thanks. So, thank you. Our final topic or question focuses on a concern that some have raised, perhaps directly, perhaps indirectly, but that centers on the concern there, or the belief that schools cannot teach these, some of these topics without advocating for certain values, beliefs, or lifestyles. And that by doing such, we would have been, in effect, encouraging certain things or discouraging. So, my question is this: is the proposed curriculum written in a fact-based, neutral stance that can be taught without advocating that certain lifestyles or beliefs or behavior are necessarily right, wrong, moral, immoral, in your opinion?
So, developmentally, I think that's largely true. And particularly, I think, because the curriculum does focus really heavily on communication. And so it does encourage the students to participate in a heavier amount of communication. Hopefully, and ideally, from a developmental standpoint, a larger degree of communication with their parents, because that, that does tend developmentally to be the strongest relationship that they engage in. But they also need to be able to begin to engage in communication with each other, to seek out additional resources for information. And I think that's really important on all of the kinds of things that we, we teach, including, including this one. And so I think that it's really important that, and I think the way that you are maintaining largely the neutrality is by focusing on increasing students' ability to communicate clearly and to think through their processes, so that they are bringing those issues to the, to the front for themselves and confronting the topics.
I would caution against using the term lifestyle. I think saying lifestyle-
I told you I'd mess it up eventually.
Well, and the point that I'm bringing is we don't ever hear people talking about the heterosexual lifestyle. I mean, how often do you hear people say that phrase? They're engaging in a heterosexual lifestyle? Though putting the term lifestyle on a sexuality or a gender identity kind of implies that it's some kind of a choice that a person made. And I think what we're trying to do with sexuality education is recognize that nobody decides one day to be gay or to be transgender. It's something that a lot of people have a lot of distress about, because they're taught every day that the heterosexual lifestyle is the right one. So, I just want to say, we need to talk about, we need to remove lifestyle from the conversation, because it has implications beyond, you know, it implies a moral stance, I guess is what I'm saying, when you insert lifestyle.
I think that's why this question is so difficult, because to me, I think the curriculum makes a good effort to be as neutral as possible. But the problem is, for people in opposition to this curriculum, by acknowledging that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer people exist, it is to them, by definition, making a value statement that then it's okay. And so I think you're never going to win this argument. I really, I don't know how we're ever going to get to a point where everyone's going to be in agreement that we're value neutral.
Clarifying question, yes?
I will ask a clarifying question with that. How we, how do we keep up? So, we talked about the, the changing, the fluidity of the medical research that comes out and talks more and more about, you know, as we learn more, as more research is being conducted, and we get more students who perhaps are identifying, or, and we do more longitudinal studies, because, you know, some of this research studies that I have read keep saying, "We need to do more research." The research studies need to be replicated. We need to have control groups. We need to ensure that we have control samples that are correct. So, it seems like we're still not quite there in understanding all of the medical things that are, are out there, and that there's still a lot of unknowns. So, how do we, as a school district, then, keep our curriculum current with all of the ongoing new information that comes out on, on these, on these issues?
I think, as, as it pertains to the transgender community, I don't think that there is question about the existence- about the existence of transgender individuals. That I think the questions are, what is really the best treatment for each individual person? So currently, the majority of people seem to benefit most from being allowed to transition from their assigned gender to their identified gender. But what's not entirely clear is if that's really the best for all and how you distinguish who should be treated which way. But that is nothing that is at all approached in this curriculum.
So the curriculum plants itself firmly in the uncontroversial, well-known science camp, and it cautions against talking about things that we're still figuring out. It's actually in the curriculum.
That was my comment also, and then I'll get back to Abby. I mean, I think the areas where there's a lot of research ongoing and controversy, maybe some controversy are kind of in the nuanced areas that, you know, in this treatment of kids and things like that. I think the areas this curriculum is really trying to address are not areas where there is a big scientific or medical sort of discussion going on. That's the point I was making initially. And that's backed up by, you know, every consensus statement from every medical and professional organization you want, and we can provide those if you want to see them.
And I think that the understanding that there are LGBTQ students who are in the classrooms and whether it's one or 10 or 50, the mention of these different, that these different individuals exist, I think gives them validation that is very helpful.
I think you're doing it. I don't know necessarily that you need to ride the cutting edge of where we understand of all of the research to be in order to provide the kind of environment. But I think you're doing it from the fact that you're looking at data-driven decisions around this. You're engaging in a process where you're including a lot of feedback and input, more than I've seen any school district do on any topic lately in my work in particular. And I think you're doing it by including your students' perspectives, by looking at data, by including parent perspectives, by allowing parent perspectives to modify what you, you know, sort of start out with, by including, you know, expertise as you're going through it. I think you're doing the best, honestly, the absolute best that you can do as a school district to make sure that you are trying to incorporate knowledge that has become knowledge and not an idea or, but that has in fact become knowledge. I don't think you're really riding out there on the fringe of where we're exploring a lot of issues. I think you're riding, you should feel comfortable that you are looking at understandings that have been validated.
And I think how we keep it relevant and current is we review it like it's supposed to be reviewed every-
Six years.
Six years.
Just like every other-
Just like math and English and every other topic where this kind of had gotten pushed back and hadn't been reviewed like that.
And keep those conversations.
Right.
Keep those feedbacks.
Yeah, we talked this evening about the school's role in comprehensive sex education. But we have not talked about the parent's role, basically. And how, from your viewpoint, how do we coordinate what is being taught with parent values and parent discussions with their children? Because it cannot just happen at school. You know, it doesn't just happen out in the street and that's it for kids. So, you know, how do we coordinate this with parents' views and parents' responsibility to reinforce, particularly from their values and their viewpoints? You know, if their value is abstinence, then how do we, how does a parent talk to their child, say, well, this is what they told you in school, but this is what, you know, we believe in what we think is most appropriate? You know, and another thing I'm thinking about as an educator for many years, what harm have we done to students, to children in all the years that this has not been discussed? You know, what harm? And what harm is being done to children in other institutions where they do not believe in teaching this comprehensive education, that these kids seem perfectly normal in every respect and maybe have some vices in some situations where there's a pregnancy or so? But, you know, what harm is being done to children if they don't have all this?
Well, I would say that we do have a number of harms, especially in terms of the fact that we do have some of the large, the second highest STI rates here in St. Louis County in the country.
Among what population?
Fifteen to nineteen.
About what profile population?
Everyone.
Okay.
Absolutely everyone. St. Louis County's population is predominantly white, is predominantly affluent. And we're talking about rates among that community that are probably above forty to fifty percent of the population that has a chlamydia or gonorrhea are made up of white kids of median income. Yes, we do have disparities in this community and we have disparities across this where people are disproportionately affected by health issues that has a lot to do with the social determinants of health of the environment in which they live in. And I think there are a lot of differences and a lot of things that we should really be doing about that. But it is every single child in our community who is at risk. We also have disproportionately high rates of teenage pregnancies. We have disproportionately high rates of early onset of sexual activity in comparison to other organizations. We do have problems. We are also not necessarily addressing the needs of all of the schools and all of the participants in that school. And so we are having individuals who are being harmed. And I know I have worked with other school districts in the path who have had suicides, who have had bullying instances, who have had a lot of physical things, who have had students that are, you know, sexual offenders. We have issues. And I think confronting those issues by making sure that we are addressing this is really clear. And to your first point, I would also add that you're not abandoning an abstinence framework here. You are still in fact saying that abstinence is a hundred percent the most effective form of both birth control and STI prevention. And that's still what the curriculum says. And so you're not changing from that perspective that abstinence is in fact that.
I think one interesting thing to think about in terms of the harm is to look at the data about number of sexual assaults in colleges. Because I wonder if those kids in high school had had more comprehensive sexual education about consent and about sexual assault, if maybe those numbers would be impacted. Because that's very recent and very relevant data in our universities and colleges across the country.
I guess just to follow up on that thought too. In the class that I teach, and this does make me kind of emotional, but when we get to the part in my class when we're talking about what is sexual assault, what is sexual harassment? I recently had a student who was a sophomore in undergrad at Wash U who realized after the conversation that something that happened to her was sexual harassment and that she had been later assaulted, but she wasn't able to even have the vocabulary to discuss what happened to her back in high school. And so what we were dealing with was something that this student had emotionally repressed for many years. And then it was just kind of, everything made sense when she had the vocabulary and we just had to pull in a full team of counselors to help this student. That's one point I wanted to make. The other thing was, people have voiced concern about my religious beliefs. And I do teach another class, Medicine, Science, Religion, and Gender, where we actually bring these things into conversation. It's probably beyond what you can do in your school. But talking about how different religions understand sexuality and understand gender roles can be really useful to the conversation, just so people understand, oh, well, you know, my religion sees women's roles as whatever. Oh, well, in my religion, men and women do this. I mean, it can be a useful conversation. I don't know, you're very limited with the amount of time you have to cover the material. But just to acknowledge that there are different religious beliefs, it doesn't detract from what you're teaching. It just affirms that you might be having different conversations at home.
One of my areas of expertise is treating children that have been sexually abused. And the hallmark of treatment for sexual abuse victims is called trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy. The first part that we teach about, the first part that we do in that kind of therapy is psychoeducation. Because a child is more likely to be abused if they don't know about what's going on. They don't know about what sexual victimization is, and they don't understand these things. They're more likely to keep it a secret and blame themselves. So to answer your question before, I think knowledge prevents mental health problems. It doesn't cause it. In fact, it's the treatment for some mental health problems.
Focused on at Parkway is teaching our students to be critical consumers of information. And I think knowledge is power. And is there harm? Do you see children being harmed when they acquire knowledge and when they learn how to be critical consumers of this information, this specific information?
I'm an educator. No, I don't. Not on any topic.
I get thank you notes every year. I wish I had known this earlier. And it's sad for me to be telling you this, that a lot of these students have to wait until they're freshmen and undergrad to get this information. And just to let you know, every semester, there's a waitlist for my class. People can't get in. They are desperate for this information. And if you can give it to them, it's a gift. And I'm just so impressed that you're considering it.
And along those lines, I do a lot of individual education with my teenage patients. And you would be amazed at the urban legends out there about how diseases are transmitted, about how you don't get pregnant or do get pregnant. There is so much misinformation which then leads to disease acquisition and unplanned pregnancy. It is hilarious but heartbreaking how much misinformation is out there. So it is critically needed. There's no doubt about it.
I started my job at the county health department as a health educator. And we started out doing STI presentations and seventh grade STI presentations. And every single question that we got from students every single time we go out into the community to have that discussion, yeah, again, made me really want to compliment you for what you're tackling. Because they are questioning and they are getting information. And they are getting, you know, they're getting knowledge. They're gaining knowledge all the time from everyone that they interact with. This isn't the only like source, you're not the only source of knowledge and, you know, that they have. And so to the question that you said earlier about what role do their parents play, incredibly important one. And I would expect that, you know, especially parents like the ones that have been engaged in this process are parents that are going to engage with their children. And I really appreciate, especially what you're doing in terms of giving parents what you're talking about and what you're teaching so that they can use that to help frame their discussions. And the students can use that to help frame their points in their discussions. And it should make for more rewarding conversations between students and their parents, just as it should make for more rewarding conversations between students and other students. And that's ideal. And that's where you would want to get to.
Any final questions or comments from the board?
Just a little bit more on the parent aspect of this. What can we do more to help parents feel comfortable in talking about these issues with their children? Because we do hear about, you know, some parents want to have a very active role and some parents just want to abdicate all responsibility to the school district. So how do we find that common, that common ground on what we can do to help parents be engaged with their children, particularly our children in the LGBTQ community whose parents may not agree with what's happening with them or having a difficult time accepting what's going on with them?
I mean, I think engaging your parents is so important and helping educate parents that by having conversations with their kids about sex, they, just by having those conversations, they will delay onset of sexual activity and they will help their kids remain abstinent longer in many cases if they have an open conversation and if they clearly express their values to their children. So there's, I mean, there's no substitute for, you know, parents expressing those things. And I would encourage you to continue to let parents know that, that what they do really matters and that having those conversations is really important. In terms of helping support the LGBT community, you are exactly right that mental health and health outcomes are dramatically impacted by family acceptance. And if there is anything I can express to parents of those kids, it's to not reject them. Even if they can't a hundred percent support them at that moment, to not be overtly rejecting of their children and to hopefully eventually come along to be supportive and love their kids because that's the most critical really factor in how well those kids are going to do. I think you set really an amazing standard for parents. Because in a parent, you know, for a parent who's maybe has some doubts about what they feel about it, to see that the school is teaching an inclusive curriculum that supports those kids and that teaches other students, you know, a correct language and acceptance, that's going to help those parents come along. And that has huge impacts. And I'm going to tell you frankly is life-saving. You will save lives by doing that.
Just a brainstorming idea. I'm in your neighboring district, starts with an L, anyway. I live across the street from Parkway. So, but we have parent information sessions a lot. You know, it's mostly about technology, like these are the kind of things your kids are doing. This is what we're talking about. But it could be helpful to have just parent information sessions, like what is transgender? What is intersex? What is bisexual? Because I think sometimes parents aren't sure about the terms themselves. So it might, you know, just an idea to have a parent evening or whenever you do it so people can ask questions.
Part of the plan is to use more, you know, technology and our webpage and meetings. Just real quickly, I know you mentioned it earlier, just briefly, but-
So part of the plan and part of what was available for review during the feedback fair was a more comprehensive communication plan with families that will include a website giving information for our families as well as resources that families can use that weren't necessarily the resources that will be used in classrooms, and information about the opting out. And then also, Mr. Ram Spot is going to host district-wide meetings at different times of the year next year and ongoing years for families to be able to come and learn more. You know, one of the things we heard at the feedback fair is, but I looked at third grade this year and my child's going to be a fourth grader next year. Will I have an opportunity to review the fourth grade curriculum? We also know that many of our fine teachers do that level of communication with their families as well. And Ron will be with their collaboration. They're creating tools that they're sharing with each other so that the communication at the building level can be more consistent throughout the district as well. But we, you know, we heard from the program evaluation that that was an area that we needed to improve upon was communication. And so those are some of the strategies that are in Ron's plan.
So this is not evidence-based, but I'm the child of an educator. My mother was a special education teacher for 25 years. She went back and got her doctorate and became a teacher educator. And so now she's been teaching education to teachers for the last 20 years. One of the biggest philosophies that she taught me that was a very big deal is sometimes you have to pull back the curtain on being the teacher that, you know, in terms of, I know I'm the responsible person who knows everything. I'm fully prepared. I know all about this. I'm the expert. We are in many cases, but sometimes we're wrestling with some things. And parents might be wrestling with some things as well. And I think the more that you can, you're opening this process up to them and you're opening this opportunity up to engage in this level of discussion and say, you know what, we'll work out how we can address these issues that might not be something that we feel like we're fully expert in, but we will figure out how to address these things. We'll include feedback. We'll tell you what we're doing. We'll take points from you and modify what we're doing. And we'll help give you information that might help inform what you're doing and go through it together. Because I don't think anyone pretends that this is an easy process.
And I just wanted to add, in terms of being supportive to parents who might have gender variant or gay kids and be struggling with that, you could provide them with information about local support groups for families so that it would give them some resources for support themselves.
Thank you.
And to respond to your comment about education for parents from some of the letters we've received, I think that's spot on. I think we really need to reach out and educate some parents.
Might there be some resources that you all could recommend to us to provide to parents that would be added to our lesson plans perhaps that we could, we could use that are competent, reliable, neutral, you know, not advocacy-based or anything like that, but that it provides a good, solid resource for our families?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we have resource lists ready to go and support groups ready to go. In terms of neutrality, you just have to keep in mind, you know, that where there is injustice, there is activism. There, I mean, some of them are going to be by definition, there's going to be advocacy involved because this is a civil rights sort of movement in some ways. So that's kind of, you know, you have to just sort of keep that in mind. That doesn't validate them.
They'll be able to pick themselves what they feel comfortable with, but they at least are given a list of resources that we know are coming from qualified professionals in this field. Yeah. Thank you.
I'm feeling like we're about finished. We've certainly covered a lot of ground. You know, just an observation from, again, just someone who's kind of watching. I think over the years, I've seen these kinds of things. And if you're not having some disagreements and some discourse, you're probably not doing it right. And I feel the process is kind of challenging at times. I feel for Ron and his team because they were charged with, it's your turn, it's time to review the curriculum. And so you had to roll up your sleeves and do it. And I think we're trying to do it in a way that's thoughtful. And so I applaud you for that. And I applaud everyone in this room. Because everyone here, if there's one unifying thing, is that we all care about kids and we want what's best for each and every one. We want each child to come to school with a welcome environment that's safe and, and teachers that challenge them to reach to their highest potential. We all want that. And so that's what we're all ended up for. And I appreciate everyone's input tonight, most of which, the six people sitting here in the panel, the fact that you gave us tonight is fantastic. Can't tell you how much we appreciate it. I know I speak for the board when I say that. But thank you. And with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Mr. Jacob.
Thank you, our panel. I want to thank Dr. Juring, Eric Spiegel, Dr. Spiegel, Sarah Garwood, Amy. I've seen you on TV, Abby, with little kids. And Spring, a lot of good comments. We appreciate it. And just appreciate all of you being here and helping us with this. I pulled back the curtain and there was Dr. Marty. He was manipulating all kinds of things. Children's Hospital has a special place for me. My grandson spent 10 weeks there. When he was six weeks old, he was in a fire and was resuscitated. And Children's Hospital brought him back and he's a holy terror now. But thank you again for taking time out and spending so much time with us tonight. We're going to take a five-minute break. Are there any left who still want to make a citizen's speech? Okay. We'll, as soon as, we'll just take a five-minute...
High schoolers at night start school at 7:30 in the morning. They'd be bumped up on the list because they're not getting a lot...
I'll ask for those that have high school kids first.
Are the high school kids?
Yes, absolutely.
If I'm the only member of the community who, I have a parent who results, who went all the way through our, I'm the only member of the community here who wants to speak optimally or who is part of that word, you're a community, you're not a happy word.
All right, five minutes, please.
We have a pregnant woman that needs to take a potty break.
Thank you. It's awfully hard to do just a five-minute break, but we're going to try to do that. I'm going to ask those that want to make citizen's statements, especially if they're high school students, if they would line up over here and then they can tell me their name and I'll check them off. But that way we, that way we won't have to, well, just, because you're going to, you're going to go to the microphone, just... Are the, do we only have two high school? All right, well, let's start with the two of you.
So my name is Anna Osborne. I'm Parkway student, I'm a freshman. And I want...
What's your address, please?
Oh, address, Beauvais Court. And the Parkway School District has been proudly equipping students for an ever-changing world since 1954. In the recent years, that hasn't been occurring in one specific area, which is the health curriculum. I feel Parkway needs to equip students with the knowledge of sexuality and gender identity due to the increased visibility within the community. Without understanding the concepts of sexual orientation and gender identities, students will continue to have false information instead of fact, trusting other students to give them the correct information. The more knowledge a student is armed with, the less likely they are to make hurtful, dismissive, or even bigoted comments. Students should not form their opinions based solely on comments from their peers, but with students learning scientifically-based facts, they will be given the opportunity to form their own opinions. The proposed curriculum change is focused on giving the students the information they need to have optimal health, no matter what their identity may be. Currently, the negative health outcome, outcomes of those in the LGBTQ community do not come from their identity but of the lack of understanding of their peers and family and friends. With the curriculum change, all students will learn about their options for staying healthy and having a better understanding of gender and identity differences so many students are facing. Those who are brave enough to live their lives as who they are will see they are not as alone as they feel. In situations where the safety is threatened, they will know better to address the situation or obtain assistance.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you, Anna.
Hi, I'm Jordan Beveridge, 841 Guanaville Drive. I'm a senior at Parkway West High School. I've been attending Parkway since kindergarten and I've gone through all of the health classes offered. I am in support of the proposed curriculum. It has been obvious in all of my health classes that abstinence was consistently taught first and the proposed curriculum will continue to most strongly advocate for this. Whenever I learned about healthy relationships, I was given information at school and was encouraged to take this home to my parents and discuss it with them. I know without a doubt that kids are going to hear about this stuff, even if it's not taught to them at school, whether it's from the internet or from their peers. Health class is the safest and most educational environment for most young people to learn what they need to know and strengthen respect for their own values, bodies, and the people around them. Young people have varying levels of conversation with their parents at home. LGBTQ young people's sexual education should be given just as much value as straight ones, whether or not these people are a minority. It's wrong for us to treat people like they don't matter simply because they're not the majority. The curriculum will augment the safety of all students without ever causing them to question their traditional values or their own identity. The fact is that young people need to know about the topics that will be added to the curriculum. If some parents would still rather their children not hear this from a health teacher, they're given the choice to completely opt out of the lessons. But they should not give all the other students a disadvantage in their education due to their own personal beliefs. The new changes proposed are not something outrageous.
Sorry, your time is up, Jordan. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. I'm going to call a few names here so that you can be ready and come up and you won't have to wait a minute in between. Are there any other high school students that were on the citizen's list? Okay. Thank you. Let me call a couple of names here. April Matrolis Modell and Amanda, is it Amanda Heideman? Okay. And then following her, Molly Galino.
Hi, I'm April Matrolis Hodel. My address is 745 A.G.N. Way, 63011. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak. I'm a Parkway parent. I'm also an ICU nurse in St. Louis. I hold a master's degree and an advanced certification in my field. I'm a political conservative. I've listened to and considered every aspect of the newly proposed health curriculum. We cannot argue the fact that the proposed curriculum has been fully vetted by the medical community. I would like to talk about the idea of lifelong benefits of sexual integrity. As an undergrad, I wrote a research paper titled "Transgender Persons' Perceptions of Nursing Care." This paper included months of research on the transgender community, a community which openly and generously allowed me to interview them, shared lots of personal stories about being treated unfairly by healthcare professionals. Every adult transgender person that I interviewed for my paper believed in the lifelong benefits of sexual integrity. There is an entire community of adults, of adults out there living their lives in fear of judgment every day. And just like us, they want our children to be safe and healthy. You don't have to believe in something for it to exist. As an ICU nurse who is taking care of our community on a daily basis, I'm here to tell you that transgenderism exists. One week ago, I cared for a patient who identifies as female who is anatomically male. She is 75 years old. She lives in a nursing home. All she asked of me was to be treated fairly and with respect. And I've also taken care of multiple transgender adults who have attempted suicide. As an adult in this community, it's my job to set an example for our kids.
Sorry, your time. Thank you very much.
Amanda Heideman, 965 Burgundy Lane. I am a board-certified family medicine physician with Children at Henry and West High. I am here tonight in support of the proposed updates to the curriculum. Our students deserve the highest quality education that's based on the best available science and medical evidence, and this curriculum has been drafted as such with expert input. As a physician, I see firsthand the consequences that occur when young people are ill-informed about sexual health issues. As we heard, we are near the top of national lists for sexually transmitted infections. The curriculum does not teach too much too soon as our children are already exposed to this information from their friends and the media regardless of how well we try to protect them. They are becoming sexually active earlier than we would like and in ways that they may not even identify as sex. I have personally cared for pregnant children as young as 10, which is fourth or fifth grade. Presenting our students with a more thorough and inclusive curriculum will not undermine or compromise the teaching that we are doing at home. If anything, it will serve as a discussion point about our own family values and how we expect our children to behave. Our children should be educated in a way that helps them understand what they are seeing and hearing in the world of today and it needs to be based on science. I urge the board to please vote yes on the proposed changes to the sexual education curriculum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Molly? Molly Galino?
She had a lady.
Okay, she had a... Carrie Vols? There you go. And following her, Rob Wild.
My name is Carrie Vols. I live at 2250 Village Green Parkway. I have a student at Parkway West and a student at Parkway Middle School. I'm already on record as being in favor of the proposed health curriculum and I hope to do the right thing and vote yes in March. Today, I'm here for two reasons. The first is to thank you, and here's why. Parkway's administration and staff attempted to include parents in this process from the very beginning and while some people stepped up, most did not. And then people got upset for not being included and the health curriculum being shoved down their throats, which of course couldn't be further from the truth. And yet, instead of throwing up their hands and saying, "Too bad, time's up," Parkway's administration and staff slowed down. They listened to both sides' concerns and in an unprecedented move, even shared the lessons both in an open curriculum viewing and online as well. This has been the most thorough, transparent, inclusive process I've ever seen. And I'm so glad to be a part of Parkway and I want to say thank you for that. The second reason I'm here is to ask for a favor and that's, as you listen to the following comments as we go along, I want you to put yourself in the shoes of the LGBTQ youth who you've heard speak here, leading up to today. Listen to the language that's used today by those who are opposed to the advancement of our curriculum and let it sink in. Because these kids hear these kinds of things every day and this is the language that they hear and it's like a drumbeat. So please, take the opportunity... drumbeat. So please, take the opportunity to change the drumbeat that they hear, make them feel special, make them feel necessary, and let them know that they're important enough to educate. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Wild?
Rob Wild, Greenbrier, Baldwin, Missouri. And I, too, have presented my views before this board before, so I won't repeat that, and I will try to be brief because it is way past my bedtime. I had the opportunity to come and read the full text of the curriculum in January. Thank you for that opportunity, and I continue to be strongly in favor of this curriculum. I also work in higher education. I'm an associate vice chancellor for students at Washington University, and I want to echo the comments of Dr. Amy Sislow, who talked a lot about the challenges that college students face when they have not had good, comprehensive sexual health education in the high schools that supports their identities. College students really struggle when that is not in place. To the board, I know you have a very difficult decision to make. To the parents who have shared tonight, I really am grateful for all the views that have been shared here tonight. Shows me as a Parkway member of the community that people really care about our students. I urge you as a board to listen to everybody who's spoken tonight and really make a decision that is based on the best interests of the students in our schools. Please, I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. Paula Harden. And following Paula, Meg Marion.
Good evening. A little raspy after sitting here for a while. What I want to speak to is my sons. I have two sons with disabilities, and I want to tell you a story about my oldest son, who is now a 10th grader at West. My son wanted to educate his elementary community school about his diagnosis of Asperger syndrome. He wanted to share with them what it meant, what it looked like. We thought this was going to be a great idea. We thought that his students in his class would embrace him. The more information and a better understanding of him as a student would cause inclusion. After that talk, he was ridiculed, marginalized, and bullied by other classmates. More information didn't empower him. Instead, it made him a target. I want to give you this information to seriously think about. The proposed sex ed curriculum is meant to reduce the discrimination and marginalizing of the LGBTQ community. However, this could be a Pandora's Box. Instead of reducing bullying and marginalizing of these students, it could do just the opposite as what was done to my son.
Your time, I'm sorry. That goes by so quickly. Meg, and then following, Meg Patty Fetter.
Meg Marion, 1944 Tower Bridge, 63146. Thank you for having us here. As stated by Ron, and we've touched on a lot of topics tonight, but as stated by Ron in a news article, our goal and our intent is to reduce the discrimination, marginalization of a population of our students. I say, in other words, this proposed curriculum is about acceptance for all. So we have a son also has a disability. We understand marginalization and discrimination, and we appreciate that after a year of negotiations, that Parkway purposefully put the word "all" in its vision and mission statement specifically for these reasons. A number of children with disabilities are mainstreamed into music, art, and PE. A third of those Parkway student body is made up of these students who are either receiving special school districts services or Response to Intervention, RTI. Over 6,000 children may not be, would fit into this category, may not be emotionally developed or equipped to understand the basic core curriculum. The repercussions can be, as we discussed tonight, fear, anxiety, anger, confusion, and a multitude of other psychological issues. I'm on this earth to protect my child and his needs. Between ELA, social studies, and now health ed, I wonder how his emotional well-being truly will be affected. Have you looked at the books that are also infusing sex ed and all of the other isms? Right now, the book Beloved is being read in the high schools.
Sorry, your time is...
Thank you.
Thank you, too. Sarah Patty Fetter. Dane Kamen? Oh, it's Park Patty.
So my comments were one thing coming in and a different thing now that this has taken place. I'll do my best to be brief. Patty Fetter, 1377 Princeton Court, Baldwin, 63011. Consumers and participants in Parkway education for a cumulative of 18 years with both my children. And my comments coming in were going to be, my biggest concern, and first of all, thank you, guys. It's a difficult task, and thank you. When I was researching the curriculum based on the documentation that you published on the website, I was really taken aback when I researched the resources. I recognized all the LBG, the documents there, and I recognized that it was about inclusion and respect, and I have no issue with sensitivity training and so forth. That's not my issue. My issue was with the other documentations that I saw. When I came across them and I Googled them and went down to deep down about us, about us, about us on each of those websites, they all ran back to Planned Parenthood, and that concerned me, and it surprised me, to be honest, because I've always had, this, 18 years, I've never been to a board meeting, shame on me, but this moved me to come because everybody, it seems to me that there may well be a reason to think that there is an agenda. That's one of the things that's a concern before I came. Now that I've come, my observation was that we're talking about apples and oranges. The apples, in terms of the sensitivity and the respect and the caring of the folks that walk the LBG, that walk, that was different. My concern as a parent is structured towards sexual reproductive privileges and responsibilities, and I don't see any balance in the panel in front of you or in the resources cited.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And following Dane, Julie Rine.
Dane Kamen, 12812 Sorolla Place. When I walk my dogs in the morning, I often run into one of my neighbor's daughters. She's out there with her child, a surprise child, and her life was changed dramatically. She's still living with her parents. She dropped out of school. Her entire life has changed. She's not alone. 4% of all of the 15- to 17-year-olds become pregnant each year. 12% of the 18- to 19-year-olds become pregnant each year. These numbers are huge. On a personal note, my own great-grandmother became pregnant when she was 12. So yes, sex does happen at a very young age. With absence-only programs, you know, you guys are having a hard time figuring out what to put in the course. It's going to be even tougher for parents. I think some of these people over here would give it a good run, but it's still going to be tough. There are just so much out there. So as you make your decision, I hope that you really consider what is best for the individual students, not what's politically correct, not what any of us say, but what's great and what can be useful for the child. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, and then Bob?
Hi, thank you. Julie Rine on Chauvinac Drive in Baldwin. Like some of the other speakers, I haven't changed my perspective, but I've added some specific comments I'd like to make, so I will do my best to keep it organized and logical. I'd like to start by saying to ask you to please vote no on the proposed health curriculum changes. Leave parents as the primary decision-makers as to the best means for educating their child in this matter. If there are parents who want this curriculum available, make it an opt-in opportunity rather than an opt-out opportunity, leaving the foundation of Parkway's health curriculum safe for all children and respectful of all families. You just listened to a panel of experts, but the only experts on my child in this room are my husband and I. I don't want sex education to be value-neutral, but the only way to educate my children on these topics with value present is for it to happen at home. I consider you, I ask you to consider us as parents, your customers, and to serve us the way you would like to be served in our shoes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bob? And following Bob, Karen Atkinson.
Bob Ryan, also on Chauvinac Drive. Vote no on this curriculum. I've noticed a tendency. People get elected, and for whatever reason, they think they need to solve other people's problems for them. It reminds me of this old saying, you know, if a tree falls in the forest, does it make a sound? Sometimes it feels to me like if a problem gets solved and an elected official didn't solve it, they think it didn't get solved. You don't have to solve every problem, okay? So please, don't go further and further into this. It's not necessary for you to do it, and if you head that direction, you're going to have to start teaching tolerance of things like adultery, because there are people who do that, and then some of them commit suicide when it's found out that they did that. That doesn't mean you have to teach neutrality on adultery or on any other various different sexual activities. This does not tie to Parkway's goals. It's an incredible stretch to try and tie this type of education to Parkway's goals. If you want to teach about being kind to people, that's wonderful. You don't need to teach about sodomy and oral sex and all of that. Please, you can, if someone tries to touch you here, that's sexual. It's very simple. You don't need this agenda from these people here tonight. I just ask you to put yourself in the shoes of my wife and me and the congregations of 24 different churches and the Muslim community. You're going to shove this down our throats if you vote yes. Keep it neutral.
Your time, I'm sorry.
Vote no. Thank you.
Karen Atkinson. Okay, there she is. And following her, Moniza Hassan.
Hi, I'm Karen Atkinson, 91 Meadowbrook Country Cup Estates in Baldwin. I have an eighth-grade boy in West Middle and a daughter in 10th grade at West High, and I'm glad to see the updates to the sexual education curriculum. I think the kids are getting barraged with different sexual messages on TV, on the internet, in rap music that they listen to, you know, things on the radio. I just think they get hit with all this glamorization of sex, and I think to hear it in a good, educated way is the best way besides the parents talking to the kids. I talk to my kids all the time about different things, and I try to filter out what I can out of the media or things, and when something comes up, and I'll talk to them about it and say, you know, they're glamorizing this because they are looking at ratings or trying to sell songs or whatever, but they know my stand on it, and they know, you know, what I think about it and how to protect themselves and not to have sex. But it's nice for them to hear it from other respected adults, and they're not going to be talking to other parents about it, although some of my kids' friends have talked to me about it, and I know that there was a freshman girl having sex with a sophomore boy and how there's been oral sex in middle school with people that they know. So it's going on, and some of these parents that think that it's not, they're...
Thank you very much. Moniza, and you'll be followed by Mohammed?
And I'm short.
So am I.
Moniza Hassan, Parkway resident, Bromfield Terrace, Baldwin. I speak as a parent, as well as head of middle school at Old Slum Day School, Weidman Road, Baldwin. We follow the Parkway School District very closely in all areas of education. The newly proposed changes in the sexual curriculum completely contradict the value system we uphold at our school and the community we serve. We have students move back and forth from Parkway schools. Opting out of sex ed lessons will not keep our children from being exposed to the information being deliberately put out there. Giving explicit information to children on LGBTQ sexual activities involving masturbation, oral, and anal intercourse, and I feel shy saying those words, as well as emergency contraception, needs to be left to the parents and parents only. I urge you to please respect our roles as parents and teachers of our local and religious communities and help us guard our sexual integrity by voting no for the proposed changes in the sexual curriculum. Thank you so much.
Now it's my turn to fix the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mohammed Malik. I work at Centerpoint Hospital, and I do counseling and group therapies. And one of the things that I find very effective in communication and teaching is always make something simple and direct and to the point. What I love about the abstinence curriculum is that it's simple and direct to the point. There's no mystery behind it. You don't have sex. You don't get diseases. You don't get pregnant. But when you introduce all these new, different possibilities, all you're going to do is actually confuse kids and overwhelm them. And no, I'm not against knowledge and scientific science. However, this is actually advocating a lifestyle. There's no way around it. You're not talking about menstrual periods. You're not talking about, you know, how a male genitalia, you know, evolves or grows up in a young man. You're not talking about breast development. You're not talking about these things. And also, some of this information is actually incorrect. Like, anal sex is pleasurable. That's incorrect. Anyone ever tried pessary? That's not pleasurable, okay? Also, anal sex is actually the most dangerous form of sex you can have. In other words, it is the easiest way to get STDs. So what I'm saying is, when you're going to have this curriculum, you are not really going to be able to solve problems. You're going to create more. I vote no for the curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure how to say all of this name, but Bade. Lives at 1240 Weisman Drive. Oye Bamichi. I gave it a Spanish translation, but I don't know if that's right. All right, well, maybe that person's not here. Steve Johnson. And following Steve, Catherine Merrick.
Hi, Steve Johnson, Spring Meadows Drive, Baldwin. Thanks for still sticking around and letting us have our say on this. I have a son who attends Parkway School District and a daughter who will be joining him soon. I've looked over the proposed changes, and I am relieved to see the updates to Parkway's sexual health curriculum. According to the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, over 25% of new HIV cases in 2015 were in the age range of 13 to 24. HIV can be contracted from a variety of unsafe and unprotected sexual practices. For the sake of my children's spiritual well-being, it is my responsibility to teach our children at home about our faith and spiritual beliefs as well as the emotional consequences of sexual activity. For the sake of our community, it is critical that information regarding contraception and sexual risk reduction, as it pertains to different sexual orientations, be taught in our public schools. The proposed updates are supported by science, are realistic about adolescent sexual behavior, and in my opinion, age-appropriate. I encourage the board to continue to show leadership and vote yes on the proposed sexual education curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm Catherine Merrick. I live at 14707 Windsor Valley Court in Chesterfield. And I'm also a, I'm a parent of two grown adults who got a wonderful education in Parkway. I'm a retired middle school counselor from the neighboring R District, where I worked for 20 years. And I want to say that I believe that we can state unequivocally that the inclusion of LGBTQ issues in the curriculum is a matter of life and death. Numerous health and educational organizations, such as the Department of Health and Human Services, CDC, National Association of School Principals, and among others, many others, have studied the issue recently and found that approximately 10% of adolescents deal with LGBT issues and concerns, and that gay youth are from two to six times more likely to attempt suicide... to attempt suicide than their straight counterparts. Some studies report that as many as 20 to 35% of LGBTQ youth have attempted suicide. However, they've also supported that this suicidal behavior is drastically reduced if students have, one, caring and accepting parents, and, two, a school climate which can promote a safe and supportive learning environment. Without this environment, students have the increased risk of violence, bullying, harassment, skipping school, depression, missing out on their entire academic potential. I'd like to say that also it's been shown in these studies that that school climate can be created by lessons in the curriculum which teach-
Your time is up. Thank you, thank you very much, Catherine. Pamela Kramer?
Hello. I gotta say, I wish we were spending this much time talking about spelling. Anyway, I live at 343 Baxter, 63011. No one in support of this abstinence-based, because it still is abstinence-based, curriculum change is suggesting that anyone should give up their faith. On the contrary, this curriculum change should give faith-based families the opportunity to reinforce their beliefs on the home front. However, religious beliefs cannot dictate the curriculum of a public school. In fact, it's unconstitutional. My parents sent me to Catholic schools for 12 years, and at the risk of being stoned in front of everyone, contrary to that Catholic upbringing, at 17, I secretly went to Planned Parenthood to get my first gynecological exam and birth control. No one with knowledge taught me about sex or about protecting myself. All I knew is what friends told me and what I saw in pop culture. But my parents did this because they wanted me to receive a Catholic curriculum. They made that choice. Parents have choices. I chose this school district. I moved my kids from Webster School District when my daughter was one, or first grade, and my son in third grade. I've not regretted that choice. I'm proud of the work that Parkway teachers, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you for teachers over here. And the administrators, for all the work you've done on this curriculum upgrade. The school board has fielded endless questions and heard countless evidence on why this curriculum upgrade is important.
Sorry, your time is, unfortunately.
Don't let your listeners get in the way of-
Thank you, Pamela. The last two I have on the list here is Joseph Stemler, and the last one is Adnan Shaikh.
Yes, I'm Joseph Stemler, 1841 Chelmsford Drive. I'm thankful for the opportunity to have reviewed this curriculum, and I thank you for listening to me now. I urge you to carefully review the curriculum also before voting on it. For my part, I find the curriculum inadequate for my children for multiple reasons, including less than accurate science and missing topics. Grade three stages of development describes human life starting at infancy. Describing the first stage of life as infancy in the third grade would have been confusing to my sons, as they were fortunate enough to experience their brothers and cousins while they were still in their mommy's bellies. The seventh grade lesson on human anatomy and reproduction discourages the use of scientific terms, male and female. The terms have meaning in describing what members of a species contribute to the biologic process of producing offspring. In terms of missing items, I could find no mention of the damaging psychological and addictive nature of pornography. The closest mention I could find was in a high school lesson entitled "Online Safety and Sexting." It says to teach that looking at pornography online can be a bad idea, especially for teens. There are sometimes extreme and disturbing things. Consider the children whose parents don't talk about the subject, or they owed something more than "can be" and "sometimes." How about "it is a bad idea and it is disturbing"? Should we not teach about the dangers of pornography and how it reduces the person being viewed to a mere object and not a person at all? How is pornography a healthy relationship between the person viewing and the person being viewed?
I'm sorry, your time is, thank you. And Adnan, are you here? Then I think we have finished with citizen statements. I want to thank all of you, especially those of you that are patient enough to hang around and give us your comments after a long wait. So thank you very much. And yes, you don't have to stay around for the rest of our board meeting unless you have a son or daughter on the board.
Please be respectful when you leave, because we do have to finish our meeting.
Thank you. 12.0 Communications. Calendar of meetings. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 9, 2016, at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School with an anticipated closed session at 6:00 PM. 12.02, I don't know if these people are here, but if they are, I'd like them to stand. I didn't see them tonight. And we have board candidates who have filed for the election on April 8. Is that correct?
Fifth.
April 5. In order of filing, candidates who have filed for the office of director on the school board are Sam Sorrentino, I guess he doesn't have to stand, but Sophia Ford Glattan, A.J. James Wang, Sudhir Rathoid, and Michael Burts. The terms of Dr. Sorrentino and Tom Applebaum are the ones that will expire here in April of 2016, and two more people will be elected. A board candidate forum for your information, sponsored by the League of Women Voters, will be held here at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 29. 12.03, Board Liaison Reports. Are there any board liaison reports? I'll begin with one. I was at the District Vocal Choir, all District Vocal Choir for 5th graders, over 200 5th graders up there, and of course, North Middle School had their, I don't remember what we call them, but their choreography and what they presented, what they sang, three or four songs was just, it just gets better every time. And of course, the kids were great, and the guest conductor that came in. And what a great thing I think we do that we allow them to do this, not in a gymnasium as we have done in the past, but on a real stage. And I'm sure it's something that they'll remember later as how professional and how good it was, and it was just a special occasion for them. Any other board liaison reports?
Nope. Next.
I should have kept my mouth shut.
I do want to just mention one thing if I could. I'm not part of the board, but Desi Kirchhoff and I had a wonderful opportunity last night, and I think it's worth noting. We have a, we've had a couple football coaches have won 100 games this year earlier in the year, but actually, last night, we celebrated Coach Rick Kirby, last week, won his 400th high school basketball game, 22 years of coaching. That's quite a feat, and Desi and I had a chance to present Mr. Kirby with some recognition last night at part before they had a varsity basketball game. I think he won 401, or was it 402 already last night? 401. But that's quite an achievement, probably one of the winningest basketball coaches in the area, certainly the state, and he's not done yet. We told him, we want to see him get to 500, but it was really quite an honor.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you. Want to remind everybody that, well, this says February 10. Oh, I'm sorry, that's already happened. You can see there some of the upcoming subcommittee meetings. Let me go to 13.0 Action Items. There's quite a list of them here. A lot of these have to do with the facilities, things that will happen this summer that we've already talked about. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the February 17, 2016 board materials?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Jacob, I would like to accuse myself from having 13.
13, please.
Okay. Let me mark that, so I do that separately. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? I don't think so. So all in favor of those except for 13.13?
Aye.
Well, actually, in favor of all of them, I guess. 13.13 carries 6-0. Let me do it separately. Okay. There's no policies to review. Work session. Our favorite lady. We do look forward to this, and you've made a lot of parents happy, not this year, but the coming, the coming year.
They're all home watching.
First reading of the 2017-2018 Academic Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first reading of the 17-18 Academic Calendar. The development of the proposed academic calendar was a collaborative effort by teachers and administrators. The Calendar Committee convened in the fall and has been working on it all the way up until January. There are several things that we consider when we develop the calendar. Desi guidelines, student attendance requirements, our collective bargaining agreement language, academic needs, religious holidays, and this year, we also considered our calendar survey results, which went out to the community. We also took a step further because our calendar had received so many concerns that we did take our proposed calendar to our PTO leadership a few weeks ago, and we see, we received some very positive feedback. One member said the proposed calendar was the best they have seen in 15 years. So that was a great compliment. I really want to thank the committee for considering the parent input. It's really hard to make everyone happy considering we only have so many days, and when you push on one end of the calendar, you have to pull on the other, and there are some things that our teachers needed to reconsider as well. So I really appreciated everyone's collaborative effort, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You had me at August 16.
Okay.
The concern I do have, though, is that semesters are not balanced. I believe it's six days.
That is correct.
And I also saw that in December, the 22nd is a vacation day or start of winter break, rather than go through till Friday.
Instead of using the whole week for school and where people would have Saturday and Sunday, we're letting them off on the 22nd. School's done on the 21st.
That is correct. And we did look at other school districts' calendars, and there seemed to be a pattern of having uneven semesters, and we did-
But that's one of our prerequisites. That's one of our-
It's one of our, one of our considerations. And so we had conversation in the committee. It's mainly a high school with our high school teachers and some of, you know, the curriculum that they need to cover. And if you weigh the events in the second semester, whether it be state testing, whether it be special days, whether it be snow days, we felt that there was enough of a latitude that we felt that this would meet the academic needs for our teachers and our students.
Six days.
Well, I had the same concern. I questioned it too with Amy, but I think with what you said about the snow days, the testing, and also, I think that the research shows that we have more health absences in second semester. So that made sense to me.
But I just don't want us to lose sight that that is one of our considerations, because we seem to keep kicking it down the road, but that's just as important as, you know-
It is definitely something that we will keep on our list of top priorities and try to even those out as much as possible. It certainly will not come off that list, and I can go back to the Calendar Committee with feedback from the Board of Education this evening to see if they would like to recommend any further changes.
Amy, if we have no snow days or a small amount of snow days in 17-18, will that have shortened second semester?
So right now, we would end second semester on May 24. And so if we had, if we didn't have any snow days, and then if we had snow days and had to make up at least, we have six snow days built in our schedule, so the latest we have going is up to May 31. So that would be three days after Labor Day.
June 1st.
I'm sorry.
June 1st.
Yes, there it is in June. Thanks. Yeah, yeah.
Does that mean summer school will start the next Monday?
Yes, and we have not put the summer school dates on here or kindergarten registration. We will do that after the calendar is approved, and we'll have to work with the academic team on what summer school would look like.
One thing that we're going to continue to do is use the PTO as a sounding board for the calendar. In other words, we'll keep working with a PTO console and getting review. And then Mr. Tandy has strongly suggested, and I agree, that we ought to probably do a survey every three years, a thorough survey, because we hadn't done one this year, and I think it was good. It was really good feedback. So I think we need to have a process so we continually have some way for parents to be involved, and also to use that survey mechanism, not every year, but every three years. I think it's been a long process, but I just want to compliment Amy and the committee too. I think they've, you know, they've taken a lot of input, and to Dee's point, I think we'll certainly take that into consideration. I don't think we want to get any more unbalanced in six days. I mean, I think that is stretching a little bit potentially.
And kudos to the 16. That still seems really mean. But not really. I grew up going, like, the first week of August, we would start school.
If the legislature gets its way, we'll be starting later down the road. Push it back after the state fair.
Any other questions?
Any other comments or questions about the calendar?
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. 14 Action Items, there are none. Policy Review, there are none. They're coming. Get ready. I'm sorry. We're not going to have that work session again with Amy, are we? 17.0 Reports, there are none. Call for a special meeting, none. Our next scheduled closed session, the next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, March 9, 2016, at 6:00 PM at Central Middle. Details of the closed session will be posted 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?